Thank you to our Tuesday, July 11th, 2023 Clay County Planning and Zoning Meeting. A few housekeeping rules, please. Tonight, we will hear five cases. We will begin with a report from the planning and zoning staff that will summarize each case prior to any discussion the board members may have. We will then ask the applicant to step up to the podium to ask or answer any questions and present support of their application. We ask the applicant to begin by stating their name and address for the record as these meetings are recorded. We will then ask for any public participation that may support the case being heard, and then anyone that may oppose the case being heard. Again, asking any participant to begin by stating their name and address. Please remember, the topic of discussion needs to remain pertinent to the case being heard. The purpose of the Planning and Zoning Board is to hear the cases and make recommendations to the Clay County Commission. The Commission will review and decide the cases heard tonight on July 19th, 2023 at 6:00 PM in this room. Could we be, could we begin tonight with a roll call of attendance?
Yes, Chairman. I do want to add, as far as the County Commission dates go, the first case will be heard the 19th, and we will announce the other cases at a later date. So they'll need to contact Planning and Zoning for cases two, three, and four.
So will two, three, and four, will they be on the P&amp;Z website?
We will put it on the website, but we don't have the date yet.
Very well. Thank you, Kip.
Terry Griffin.
Present.
David Rotis.
Present.
Mike Brinkley.
Present.
Brad Scarlett.
Present.
Jerry Nolte.
Here.
Mark Bags.
Present.
Randall Morris.
Present.
And Chairman Tom Decker.
Present.
Would have a call for motion to approve the minutes of our April 4th meeting as presented. Motion for approval, please.
Move to approve.
Very well. Do you have a second?
Second.
Do you have a roll call vote?
David Rotis.
Yes.
Brad Scarlett.
Yes.
Terry Griffin.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
Jerry Nolte.
Yes.
Mark Bags.
Yes.
Randall Morris.
Yes.
Chairman Tom Decker.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Would call for a motion to approve the minutes of our June 6th meeting as presented.
Move to approve.
Very well. Do you have a second?
Second.
Do you have a roll call vote?
David Rotis.
Yes.
Brad Scarlett.
Yes.
Terry Griffin.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
Jerry Nolte.
Yes.
Mark Bags.
Yes.
Randall Morris.
Yes.
Chairman Tom Decker.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Very well. The first case we'll hear tonight is case number July 23-137/rzf. And could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Chairman. I'd like to have the staff report as part of the official record.
So be it.
Alrighty. So this is the proposed replat of Spry Acres. Currently, the property sets at roughly 10-acre zoned residential low-density or R1A, and consists of one lot, and has access from Massey Road. This proposal is to split this one 10-acre lot into two 5-acre and you can kind of see that on the screen there, and that green will be the one lot, and then the yellow would be the other. This property will then be rezoned to residential ranchette, which this would make it fall under our current standard of zoning, but for lot sizes between 5 and 10 acres. There are agricultural land preservation added to each lot, and then the new lot will have access from 130th Street. This proposal falls under the Urban Services tier of the 2008 Clay County Comprehensive Plan, which allows for one unit per 20 acres, or an exception to the 20-acre minimum being 10-plus acres with an agricultural land preservation, or with the exception of the 10-plus acres being that a city within one mile may review and recommend exceptions. In this case, the city of Kearney granted their exception to this, that this is per their comp plan, this is the kind of size lots they want to see in this area. So with Kearney granting that exception, staff believes that this proposal is compliant with the 2008 Comprehensive Plan. And then on your screen, as well, is the Land Development Code, rezoning criteria, and the standard rezoning criteria we see with any of our cases. This would be the surrounding area. There in the red is going to be the city limits of Kearney. You can kind of see how close that, the lot outlined in yellow there, is to the city limits of Kearney, to the, be the northwest, see I-35, and then over there, too, the direct east would be Highway 33. Staff received no opposition leading up to this meeting. We have not gotten any objections from outside agencies. With all of our rezoning cases, we publish it in the newspaper, we post a rezoning site onsite, and send certified letters within 1,000 feet. In this case, we sent 1,300. Let's see here. Staff is recommending approval with two conditions, one of them being changes to recording copies of the plat, and the second one is having the pond inspected on Lot 1B. We spoke with NRCS. They're the ones that do the pond inspections, and they indicated that this has been done, so we don't have to, so they already meet that condition. So staff would be happy to answer any questions the commissioners may have, and the applicant is present.
All right. Very well, Shane. Any of the board members have questions for staff? Okay. I have one question. Shane, on the Exhibit A, that Item 1F, and the dedications, is that showing the Clay County has rights to the new 30-foot utility easement and the additional 30-foot right-of-way? Because there's no easements description on this final plat.
If you want to...
I'm not sure I understand. What's the question?
The question is, normally when we're replating land, the, a utility easement is part of the final plat. The utility easement is described on the final plat, granting Clay County the right to encroach on the 30-foot utility easement for drainage pipes, culverts.
Yeah. So if I remember right, the lot line in between the green lot and the yellow lot, the utility easement wasn't noted on the plat, so that's what one of the conditions addresses. And then, yes, there will be right-of-way, there was already right-of-way dedicated with the previous plat, since this is a replat, but yes, utility easement and right-of-way will be dedicated with the new plat.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Shane.
Yeah.
Yep. If there's no other questions from staff, would the applicant like to step up to the podium and present your case, please? Is the applicant for the rezoning file plat of Spry Acres present this evening? Could you please step up to the podium, sir? Could you state your name and address, please?
Randall Spry, 12919 Massey Road, Kearney.
Thank you, Randall. Do you understand the staff's report, and are you in agreement with the staff's report, or have any questions?
Nope. Just long as we get it done.
All right. Is there any, board members have any questions for the applicant? Okay. All right. Thank you, Randall. Don't go far. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on the application being heard that supports the applicant? With none, is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that opposes the With none, if with no further discussion, I would call for a motion to approve the rezoning of Spry Acres.
Move to approve.
Very well. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do you have a roll call vote?
David Rotis.
Yes.
Brad Scarlett.
Yes.
Terry Griffin.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
Jerry Nolte.
Yes.
Mark Bags.
Yes.
Randall Morris.
Yes.
And Chairman Tom Decker.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And Kip, we can go right into the, a motion for the final plat?
Yes, sir.
With attachments. All right. Then I would like to call for a motion to approve the final plat of Spry Acres with the conditions attached as set out in Exhibit A.
Move to approve with conditions.
Very well. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do you have a roll call vote?
David Rotis.
Yes.
Brad Scarlett.
Yes.
Terry Griffin.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
Jerry Nolte.
Yes.
Mark Bags.
Yes.
Randall Morris.
Yes.
Chairman Tom Decker.
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next case we'll hear this evening is case number July 23-138CUP. And could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Chairman. We'd like to have the staff report as part of the official record.
So be it.
So this is a conditional use permit request for a cell tower. It is located off 140th Street. It's approximately 10 and 1/2 acres, zoned agricultural. Probably looks familiar to some of the board members because it came in front of the board last year as well with a different height, but it's also within a mile of the city of Kearney. The subject property is outlined in yellow. The proposal is for a request for a 135-foot tower, which includes the 5-foot lightning rod. If you'll remember, the county amended the Land Development Code in relation to cell towers last year as well, and this would have to meet those new requirements. Fencing and lock gate would be required, landscaping would be required, and also one of the new updates is that an impact study is required as well, and we'll talk about that here in a minute. Here is a picture of the site, of the site plan. It shows the cell tower kind of to the north with the house and accessory building on the subject property, and it shows it in relation to the house located to the north and west, and I'll show you that on the aerial as well. But this was the site plan submitted by the applicant. Here is the subject property in blue. You can see there are three lots just to the west with single-family homes. The proposal is to put the cell tower north of the house on the subject property. You can see, as I said, this is within a mile of the city of Kearney. You can see the Kearney city limits is kind of highlighted in the kind of light gray, and anything in color on the screen is unincorporated Clay County. So with all of our cases, we talked about the comp plan and the Land Development Code. So the comp plan tells us this is located in the Urban Services tier, which is the area that's closer to the cities. We did reach out to the city of Kearney for comments. They did come back with some comments, basically not, not objecting or not for the tower. They basically stated that they were aware that a cell company was looking for a tower location in this area. The Land Development Code for any conditional use permit has criteria that the burden of proof is on the applicant to show that they have addressed these six criteria. So these six criteria were included in the staff report that was submitted to the, the board and posted on the Planning and Zoning website. Some additional information is staff has received opposition leading up to this case. Some of that opposition was attached to the report that was submitted to the board, and then I think we'll have some folks that want to speak about this subject tonight as well. We did publish this case in the newspaper, posted a sign onsite, and sent a total of 24 certified letters. I want to talk about the amendment to the Land Development Code that the county adopted last year. The big changes were the increased setbacks. So the, any cell tower now has to be a total of three times the height of the tower from any residential structure on an adjacent property. That's new with the amendment. It also has to be 1 and 1/2 times the height of the tower from any property line. That used to be just one times the height of the tower. And the tower also has to be 100% of the height from any residential structure on the subject parcel. In addition, it was added that an impact study is required to be submitted by the applicant. In this case, they submitted an impact study. The county sent that to a third-party appraisal service to have them review that study. Both the impact study and the review done by Fitch Appraisals was attached to the report, and then staff also reached out to the Clay County Assessment Department and had them review the impact study and Fitch Appraisals' review of this, and the assessment departments didn't provide any objection. They basically stated that they were not aware of any properties in Clay County where the assessment is adjusted due to proximity to a cell tower. So we had three people, or two people, look at that impact study. Additionally, there were some landscaping requirements that were adjusted in the amendment as well. This would have to meet those landscaping requirements. And then this tower location is also located in the Airport Overlay District in the Land Development Code. So we have an area that's, if you're so close to Midwest National Air Center, we limit the height of structures in that area. Typically, that's limited to 927 feet of elevation. So you take the base elevation at the airport, which is 777 feet, and you're allowed to go 150 feet over that elevation with any structure. In this case, the cell tower exceeds that by about, I think, 27 feet or so. However, the state statutes, you'll probably remember, we talked about the state statute that also governs towers in Missouri. It states that the county cannot put more strict requirements than the FAA. So you'll see, one of the conditions that staff has on this report is that they receive FAA approval before a building permit is issued. So that's some additional information. Staff is recommending that you take testimony tonight from staff, the applicant, any proponents or opposition, and then continue this case until the August meeting. There's a lot of information in that packet. We received some opposition, I think, the day before, or the day of the, the report was posted. However, if you vote to approve, staff recommends approving with the conditions that are shown in Exhibit A of the report, and those include limiting the height of the tower at 135 feet, requiring a plot plan from a surveyor showing that those setback requirements are met, the FAA approval that we talked about, and then also a structural inspection every two years on a tower, which is standard for the county in cell towers. So I would be happy to answer any questions the board members have. The applicant is present, and I think we have some, some folks that live in the area that would like to make some comments as well.
All right. Thank you, Kip. Do any of the board members have questions for staff?
Does 135 feet, does it exceed the FAA's recommendation?
We don't have FAA approval, so I don't have that information at this point. It's just listed as a condition at this point.
Yes, sir.
We did get some documentation. Besides the height, are there any other concerns raised from the airport, the signal or anything like that? Is there any concern expressed on that when it comes to Midwest National Air Center?
So we sent a letter to the airport director, and then he forwarded along to the Airport Advisory Board. We, we didn't get anything official from either the airport director or the advisory board. A couple of the advisory board members did email back, basically stating that they didn't think it was a major inhibitor for the, for operations at the airport. However, there is that letter that's part of the opposition from a tenant at the airport that was included in the packet.
Do, is there a scheduled meeting of the airport board to perhaps take this up, or is that not on the radar?
I don't believe there is, no.
Thank you.
And I guess I would add that the code, the Land Development Code requires that we advise them of this. It doesn't require that they have a meeting for it.
All right. Thank you, Kip. Do any of the board members have questions for staff? All right. Thank you. Would the applicant please step up the podium and state your name and address?
My name is Mike Brinkley. From St. Charles, Missouri. Our address is 5055 Highway N 63304. And what we're asking you to consider tonight is a new AT&amp;T communication tower. The tower itself is going to be a monopole-type tower. No wire, no guy wires coming off the tower, so it will just be, you know, the monopole-type tower. The tower itself is 130 feet. It does have a 5-foot lightning rod on the top, which will make it a total of 135 feet. We have a listing area that's 100 by 100 that will be fenced, 90-foot by 90-foot area will be fenced, and we will follow the landscaping, the new landscaping consideration that the county has. We, from the last time that we came through, we have lowered the height of this tower from 150, I think it was 155, down to 130. So we were able to comply with the, the new ordinance, with the new setbacks. This tower currently sets, I'm going to go throughout the distances real quick. It's 203 feet from the east property line, 410 feet from the north property line, 234 feet from the west property line, and 269, I'm sorry, 585 feet from the south property line. So we do comply with the new ordinance that the county has passed. Our entrance is going to be, will come off of 140th Street. We will build a 12-foot access road that will be gravel. We'll have, we know we're going to have to get a curb cut there that we will, we will do once everything if we get approval. I want to address the FAA matter. We, last time around, what AT&amp;T does when they submit for a tower, and they know, we know we're near an airport, we do a preliminary, we hire a company that does a preliminary study for us. We don't, they don't file for the permanent until we know we have approval, because they don't want to be filing for something that's not going to be built. We know this will, will get approval. We have made, Kip has made it a part of the CUP package, so before we, you know, we move forward, if we do get approval, we will provide the approved FAA package that comes from the FAA. And pretty much that's it. I mean, we're, AT&amp;T is looking at, at filling a considerable hole in their network with this tower. They wouldn't have come back again for this site if they didn't need it. Even lowering the height is kind of, you know, they've, they've lowered the, the site, the coverage they're going to get from it, but they do need this tower. There's a lot of growth that's happening in, in Clay County. There's a lot of growth that's happening in the city. This tower is designed to cover, you know, half, you know, this tower covers the county and the city. So it, it is a necessary site for AT&amp;T. They have a huge gap in their coverage, and I'm going to go over the closest sites that they have to it. So the closest site that they have to the, to the north is about, excuse me, is about eight miles away. So as you, you can tell, these, this particular tower will probably cover an area that's 130 feet, depending on the terrain, and it varies depending on the antennas they use, things like that. This tower will probably cover, cover a radius of about six to seven miles. So the engineers can up tilt the antennas or down tilt the antennas, depending on how far they're trying to, to shoot that tower. To the west, the closest tower is about three miles. To the east, the closest tower is about five miles, and to the south, the closest tower is about five and a half miles. So they have a huge hole right here in this area. So they, they need this tower. They wouldn't come back, keep coming back and asking for it.
Are these surrounding towers, are they AT&amp;T towers, or just other owners that you reciprocate with?
They, I think a couple of them are AT&amp;T towers. Other ones are towers that they've co-located on. So yeah, they, they do co-locate. If it'll, if it works out with their system and their network, they will co-locate, but I think two of them are their towers.
All right. Thank you.
So anybody, any other questions?
Yeah, I got a question for the applicant. You know, you say within proximity, within a half-mile proximity to where you want to put it, there's several tracts of acreage that's 40 to 100-plus acres that would be surely less attrusive, you know, for a tower.
Right. So to address that, we, what this particular site, like I said, we have been through this location over and over. We've, we've gone back to the engineers, you know, this is, these sites are picked by the engineers. These, these sites aren't picked by me. We, we go out, we find, they give me a search ring, which is a quarter-mile around. That's how small they are now, because they're so specific on where they want the coverage, because they are filling in holes. That's why moving it a half-mile and moving it, even moving it beyond a quarter-mile was, you know, was not acceptable to them. We went back and looked at it after the first time around, like, guys, you know, we need to relook at this, and, you know, they're like, this is where we need it to be to give this, the coverage that they want. So...
But when you said you're considering, you say you shortened the tower to try and put it there.
We did shorten it.
You can go a quarter-mile and raise it back up, because you're in a bigger area.
Right, but it, it changes the path, excuse me, it changes the pattern of the coverage that they're going to get out of that tower. So, yeah. I mean, they're, you know, they don't, you know, they, they don't come back to make your lives miserable. They, you know, they're investing a lot of money in these towers. Their goal is, they want to get, they want the coverage to be, you know, really good coverage for the customer experience, and this is where they told me they want it to be.
You said the key word, "they're gold."
They're what?
They're gold.
Well, I mean, it's, you know, it's their, it's, it's, it's their network. So, you know, they're, you know, that, you know, we do towers all over, all over the place for them, and they dictate where it goes. So the other thing I want to mention is, we did submit a real estate impact study that Bellbridge Appraisers did for us. They're a licensed appraiser in the state of Missouri. They have pulled up comps for, you know, showing actual comps of, of homes that sold that are near towers. Andrew Baker from Bellbridge is here. We have a PowerPoint that he's going to briefly go through with you and show you the comps that he pulled up. Unless you have any other questions, I'm going to bring him up here and have him go over that. Are there any other questions for me?
Yeah, before you step down. So I'm looking at your coverage map in Exhibit D. It looks like you've got cell coverage, you've got 4G LTE, you've got 5G, you're trying to get 5G plus. Is that, is that what you're trying to accomplish with this tower?
No, this tower is actually, it's, it's designed to fill a coverage gap that they currently have. So what happens is, you know, when they, when they put a new search ring out, is that they're getting a lot, they, they, the data that they get every day on these towers, they know they're getting dropped calls. They know that, that the data, people using their phones for data, the speeds are very slow, because the towers around it, because of the growth and because of the usage, usage that people are using their phones constantly, it slows down, people's experience slows down their ability to use their phone. And, you know, they'll, they'll start having a lot of, you know, the dropped call data starts going up and up. When they see that, is when they start saying, okay, we need to put a tower in the middle, we need to fill this hole. So five years ago, there probably wasn't a population that's out there, and they, they know that the growth is coming that way, so they're kind of trying to get ahead of the curve. That, you know, all the towers right now are, I think they have 5G deployed out here, pretty much.
So when you say hole, you're not talking about non-coverage, you're just talking about volume. You need to increase your infrastructure to handle it.
It's going to increase the infrastructure, and they do have areas in this area that really have very, very, very limited coverage.
Thank you.
Now, did you say you have a PowerPoint that you're wanting to do?
I do. I think, Kip.
Do we have any, do the board have any other questions for the applicant at the time being? All right. Very good.
And Chairman, I failed to mention when I gave the report that we did receive some additional information after the report was published. So Cheryl's going to come out and hand that out to the board members, just so you have that as part of your packet.
All right.
And then I'll pull up the PowerPoint. And this is going to be, this would be Exhibit B for this case.
Awesome. Good evening. My name's Andrew Baker. I'm with Bellbridge Property Advisors, and I did a study on how cell towers impact residential property values in Clay County. So I'm licensed in Kansas, Missouri, Nebraska, and Iowa, and I achieved my MAI designation in 2015. So what did I do for this report? I went to primary data sources to pull sale comps of homes that were adjacent to cell towers, and I interviewed five local real estate brokers who had firsthand knowledge with selling a home near a cell tower. I also compared that home sale to nearly identical homes in that neighborhood that occurred near the same time. That's called a paired sales analysis. And then finally, I reviewed the listing history of those sales. I looked at how long they were on the market.
Could you speak up a little, please, or speak into the microphone?
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Finally, I, I reviewed the number of days on the market, compared the sale price to the list price. So let's get into the data. This is, the first thing I looked at was the Copper Leaf subdivision. This is a really nice subdivision with homes, median home prices around $600,000. There's a large 300-foot cell tower to the south, and those homes that are outlined in red have a view of the tower. The homes in green do not, because there's a, a big tree line right here that you can't see the tower. So what happened? The homes in green do not, because there's a, a big tree line right here that you can't The homes in green sold for more or less. And during the two-year period I looked at, there were 51 homes in the red without a view of the cell tower. They sold for a median price of $590,000 or $196 a square foot. The homes near the cell tower sold for $715,000, $212 a square foot. I spoke to the listing broker of that subdivision, Trish Schreiber, and she said there was no impact. And in fact, the most expensive homes in the subdivision were closest to the cell tower. I just wanted to point out, this is the most expensive home, the cell tower. It sold last December for 1.25 million. And you can see it has a view of a cell tower behind it.
Next. At that Copper Leaf, is that a business or an industrial park directly east of this cell tower?
There's an industrial park directly to the east. You can see the cell tower driving down I-35. It's pretty prominent, yeah. It's 300, it's 300 feet in height, so. And next, we looked at a couple of sales near the water tower slash cell tower at the World's a Fun Water Tower. And this is the first one we had. It was listed for 155. We spoke to the listing broker, Jesse Burrell. He said he received four to five offers after an open house. He did not believe the cell tower impacted the price. It sold $26,000 over the list price. And again, the price was in line with other ranch homes, three-bedroom ranch homes in that subdivision. Here's another one that's.
Excuse me, timeframe, what year was that?
April 2022.
2020.
Yeah. This is a home, again, near the same area, and sold in June 2021. It was listed at 175. Kyle Schaefer with First Class Real Estate reported it, received multiple offers after an open house, sold $10,000 over the list price in June 2021. And again, price was in line with other homes.
And so that location, though, that cell tower is located immediately adjacent to a, say, a 1 million gallon elevated water storage tank?
Yep, and a cell tower. You see, there's a cell tower here that's about 250 feet, and the water tower is about 130 feet.
Okay.
So.
All right, thank you.
And here's a cell tower. This is a higher-end price, 9205 Garfield. You can see the tower behind it. It sold in September 2021, in line with the list price after less than a month on the market, I believe. And Bob De Trey with Pratt &amp; Realty indicated there was no price impact. And again, the price is in line with other homes in the neighborhood. The last one we looked at was a more rural location because I know we are in a rural location. This is a home that sold in December 2019 for 264,500. It's on about a two-and-a-half acre lot in Trimble. This is Clinton County and this is Clay County, so it's on the county line right here. And John Anderson with Woodward Real Estate indicated there was no comments from buyers. And it was in line with other, a couple of other homes we had in, in that area. So in conclusion, I interviewed five brokers. All of them said the exact same thing. There was no impact on sale price or marketing time. The Copper Leaf subdivisions, the homes closest to the cell tower sold for the highest price. And of the paired sales we did, each of them sold in line with other homes in the neighborhood, so. If there's any questions, you know, this is the conclusion of our report that the proposed tower won't impact the value of adjacent single-family homes. So if you have any questions, I know that we have the full report in your packet. Feel free to ask me.
I think another one of your comparisons was a cell tower immediately adjacent to a big substation off of 291 Highway, North Edge Liberty. We're not talking about that one, or?
Well, so I just want to say, the way that we do the report is, we have a mapping tool that we use on the MLS to look around where the cell towers are. And sometimes there's not sales. So I don't know about that particular location, but I'm guessing we looked at it. Maybe there's not homes in that area, or maybe there weren't recent sales in that area.
All right, do any board members have questions for the appraiser? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Glenn, do you have anything you want to add or roll into public participation?
I do not, unless you have some more questions for me.
I don't think we do at this time.
Thank you.
Yep. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that supports the application being heard? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that opposes the application being heard? I think we have Mr. Chesser. You state your name and address, please.
Carl Chesser, 14217 Jesse James Farm Road. I worked with several of the community members that sent in the letter of opposition. We spoke before last year on the same topic of the same lot. The memo we sent in was a four-point memo that outlines our strong opposition against this. I'm really going to try to, I'm not going to go through the whole memo again, but I am going to focus on point one, which is the main objections we have with this. We still believe is very true of why this is not acceptable for a placement, a responsible placement of a cell tower. The first part that we had in there was a reference that was in Exhibit A. That is the tenant at the Missouri National Air Center, Central Air Southwest. They highlight their concerns about having this tower in the area. We also challenged the mention earlier about the airport overlay district zone. That's because the Missouri State Statute states that it cannot impose any restrictions with respect to objects in navigable airspace. And so this is really around a land use topic in the area, just like this is another protective barrier, whether it's a natural conservation area or an airport. So we believe this is also in violation of it. Our big concern on point one really focuses on this proposed tower will, will cause substantial injury to other properties in the area. That's what we argued last time. We still believe it's evident in this case and it's still true. The first part around this was that the, this tower, 135-foot, 13-story tower is just an order of magnitude larger than any home in that area. You saw the before and after photos that were required by the, last year. This is the property owner's house with the simulation behind it, all the surrounding properties. So those, there's one both to the east, three properties to the west, and one property in the north, all are ranch-style homes. So this is literally a large magnitude difference. Even saw in that appraisal study, there was no homes in that that had even comparison to something like this, which is a large structure that literally is towering over the home. So it's not any longer a home in the area, it's literally a tower where a home may be at. So this dominates the view, which we think is a significant impact to that property. Another part around this we find is that there's an issue that violates the comprehensive plan. As we talked about before, how this is intended to retain the natural and visual character derived from the topography and woodland streams and repairing corridors. We believe this is not true at all in this case because of, again, this large-scale object that's being placed there. There is no other commercial properties nearby that even have anything like the size, not any of our utility poles or even power transfer lines in the area. So this, again, is extremely large in that. We also highlighted the impact because we want to reference that because of this adverse impact is because of the aesthetic impact of the homes, residential homes. This is all around this area. We sent in 12 letters of property owners that highlight this. They all give discrete concrete facts of how they're impacted on their properties. So the same thing we brought before, these are what people are testing to of how this would impact, redefine the actual properties that they lived at. They moved here for a reason, they moved in this residential area. This is actually redefining the property completely. This isn't just a, something off in the distance. This is that when I look out my back door, all I'll see is a tower. Because as humans, all we see is things of large scale. And like, something like this would dominate what we'd even be able to see anymore. So therefore, these are not generalized concerns. These are concrete cases that are shared, and these are all detailed accounts. We want to make sure this is very clear because in Exhibit B, all of these are used as significant evidence to deny this application. The other part we want to talk about is just the photo simulations that were required. Last time, there was no photo simulations that were supplied with code changes last year. There were, but there was minimal, so it's only on the property owner that has this. So each property owner is impacted. And we highlight this is kind of a form of presentation where they avoided sharing views from like your backyard, your home location, of all the other properties that are negatively affected by this. So if you see how tall this tower is and how it dominates over it, it totally changes the actual property itself. We all know that aesthetic value, literally curb appeal to a house is extremely important, and this negatively affects that in a large way. We also want to highlight the appraisal report that was just shared. Does not need appropriate value that references this. One, because the cases do not even reference what these rural residential homes are being faced with, as well as a tower that's immediately in their backyard. So it's not a fair comparison at all. And this should not be generalized by taking statistical averages or fair comparisons of prices of homes being sold. Instead, we sought out real estate brokers in our area to assess those very lots to see how much impact there actually would be. In this case, when we were looking at our real estate brokers, we acquired two, Julie Harmon and Chip Glennon. Both combined with over 55 years of experience in home sales in our area. Julie Harmon, 20 years of experience, said at least 10% of value in addition to homes would be impacted by this. As well as Chip Glennon, who highlighted this could be 20 to 25% of impacted value to those homes because of how it's immediately in their backyard and completely changes that definition of the home. So we believe this is extremely important. That's in our Exhibit C. So that is another significant part of evidence to highlight how these specific homes are impacted, not generalize. The real estate brokers who assessed it, not asking other facts about other properties. The other thing we want to highlight about the appraisal report that's missing is that it fails to detail what homes would have sold for if there was not a tower there. So oftentimes, the actual economics of a home, when someone invests into it and they sell it, they may say, well, look, it sold higher than what it previously was for, or maybe it sold higher than the list price because it was a home listed by a tower, hence it was priced effectively for it. But it doesn't highlight what people may have invested before there was a tower there and what they lost by losing that very definition, which is an important fact because that's what's going to happen in this case. People invested, this is the largest, most significant investment of their lives is their homes, and these are affected because real estate properties are affected by aesthetic value. The other part around this we wanted to highlight was, we included in Exhibit C, which highlights, that was the coverage map, that was what was being brought up earlier. The applicant had to show that there's a significant gap in coverage. That is not the case, there is coverage in our area. There's also not a bunch of actual detailed facts or data that's supplied around the call drop that's referenced in their narrative. We highlighted even in our, when we collected notes from applicants, or from the residential homes nearby, the one that's just directly west of here, they are an ATT subscriber and they've never had drop calls. So there's like, they better check their data, which is more data than even the applicant provided about how many drop calls are happening in our area. What was also brought up earlier by Mr. Rotis was highlighting there's, around this area, there's many other responsible placement of towers, not in the direct backyard of all these homes that are in this area. And the final things we wanted to highlight around this is just this, the kind of more of an administrative note. The things that we supplied, so the Exhibit B and C are considered significant evidence. We've worked with other people who've assessed these before on cell phone towers. And these, both the statements from all the residential owners are considered significant evidence and reasoning why this is a large negative impact to the property. We also, by getting local real estate brokers to assess this specific property and giving their feedback, that also is an assessment which is a much more understandable and they know the actual economics in the discussion when it's being sold and what would be impacted in these homes. So we ask and strongly request that you deny this tower as you did before for the same reason. It's a large, actual commercial cell phone tower in the back of residential area that's going to affect all these residential homes. We are very thankful for what you voted for before for denying this. We believe it's still in violation of that. And we also want to highlight that all the other, those who had land in this area that previously received requests to put in a tower by AT&amp;T were not asked again after the tower was denied, meaning it didn't seem like they were seeking for alternatives. They just, it was mostly focusing back in on this single lot, which again, there's a lot of alternatives. They chose to come back on this one. But every application has a stand on its own merit, and this application has no merit based on its violation to the LDC. Well, Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Is there anyone else in the audience? This man.
Hi, I'm Courtney Chesser. I live at 14217 Jesse James Farm Road. I just want to quick comment on a personal note. Many of you remember Curtis Ross here last year. This is going to be right behind his house. He spoke in front of you a lot last year. He's got stage four cancer this year. He's going through chemo, he can't be here. They need to sell their house. His wife can't maintain the yard. Ask yourself, if you were going to buy this house tomorrow, would you pay the same amount that you would have paid a couple of months ago, knowing there could be a cell phone tower built right behind it? The answer for me was no, I would not pay as much as I would have paid a few months ago. You did the right thing last year. It's your job to figure the proper placement for things the city needs. This impacts probably the most people you could possibly impact in rural Clay County by putting it right there. So thank you for what you did last year. Please stand up for us again against these corporate people. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And I'm sorry, Chairman, she's asked me to load something real quick. Okay, if you want to. Go ahead.
Good evening, gentlemen and lady. Thank you for your time and allowing me to speak. When I'm done, I have a video to show the actual.
Would you please state your name and address?
My name is Jennifer Julian, 13901 Jesse James Farm Road, Kearney.
All right, thank you.
At the end, I have a video that shows what our neighborhood is versus the World's a Fun comp house that they're referring to to show and prove the distinct differences in the residential lifestyle. There are glaring errors and omission of exhibits in the application. In the agent's own narrative in table of contents, it states deed associated with parent parcel yet actual exhibit provided is from county assessment address search on the website. Exhibit is not a warranty deed. Per State Statute 67.5096, which are permitted acts by authority, subsection two, item one, this cup may be legally denied as no lease or other written agreement from the property owner was provided. The lack of consistency in the tower height in the first narrative provided, or excuse me, submitted versus site plans, the piecemeal way the application was submitted again this time around, the failure to attach deed as stated, and the failure to provide lease as required by State Statute shows complete lack of due diligence in this application process. I would also like to point out, it is the applicant's sole responsibility to meet all county and state requirements. I believe if AT&amp;T is putting these things up all around the country, they should be very aware of what laws they are dealing with. Secondly, I would like to ask the committee if you have been provided with an FCC notification of intent to build a new tower for them. I have provided in the handout earlier this evening, Tower and Antenna Sighting Requirements FCC Printout, which proves my detail for this request. I also wonder, has the applicant provided to the FAA notice of proposed construction? I also question if he has submitted to the FAA an obstruction evaluation. This is of utmost importance to me regarding the fact that the airport sits 7,700 feet from this proposed cell tower site. The law, unless the FAA should decide for some crazy reason to override that, is 10,000 feet. To me, that is definitely a question. And if I were investing all of this money to put a cell tower up, I think it would be to my benefit. And once again, AT&amp;T should know all this. They can file free online to get both of these pre-certifications, the obstruction evaluation. And to me, it just makes good business sense that that would be done prior to submission of a cup application. Regarding criteria to be met as set forth in the Land Development Code, Section 151.3 through 10, Subsection A, Item 13. All six conditions must be met. First, I will address no substantial adverse impact on public health, safety, or general welfare. This tower would definitely impact public health by the constant emitting of buzzing sound from tower. Think of it as listening to your microwave oven run 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, except on a much greater and louder scale. The same tactics of use of noise are routinely used by the military, so I think my argument bears some weight. The tower buzzing also causes vibration, which is widely reported to be felt in the ground as well as inside. ground, as well as inside buildings in close proximity. And I'm talking 500 feet close proximity. But the buzzing and the vibration would undoubtedly not only destroy our quality of life, but also that of all the animals on the two adjoining properties that our neighbors love and care for. Our properties currently have a zero noise level rating, even though close proximity to the airport. That will become important in just a few more sentences. Regarding route access provided and designed to prevent traffic hazards, I take issue with the placement of the driveway. The two neighbors that have lived there, the ones since 1996, were denied separate private access driveway entries citing traffic hazards. So they have and have always had a shared access driveway. The traffic in this area has only increased since 1996. I just wonder why they were denied and the applicant is requesting preferential treatment. Why would the county now change this from hazard to suddenly no hazard? I would suggest the applicant's existing driveway be a shared access for tower construction and maintenance, so as to reduce this risk to public safety. The sight line at 140th on Jesse James Farm Road from both directions is very limited and would most certainly pose a hazard. I was nearly T-boned at this intersection, literally missed by only an inch as a farm truck pulling loaded cattle trailer blew through the stop sign. I stood on my brakes.
We've got a pretty full audience this evening. If, if you want to wrap things up, that'd be good. If you want to.
Okay.
If you want to submit your written opposition to the P&amp;Z staff, they can certainly forward it to all of us board members.
I would like to submit my opposition regarding the real estate.
If you want to submit it in writing to the P&amp;Z staff, they can forward it to us for our next meeting.
Okay, and could I also ask for you at that time to view the video? I went to the World's a Fun Tower Comp House and made a video to show their neighborhood, their lifestyle, their skyline, and their noise level rating is a four.
Well, yeah, we, if you want to make it quick, that'd be fine, but we're, we have a house full of people.
No, you can do it a later time, if you would prefer, because in total, it's nine minutes.
The video is not loading, so I'll get with Ms. Julian and try to get that to the board at a later, later time, or at least to the county commission, but I'll work with Ms. Julian on that. And the documents that she indicated earlier, she hoped you had, that was part of the submittal that Cheryl passed out, so you do have that information.
Okay. All right, very well, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to comment that opposes the applicant? Yes, ma'am. If you could keep it timely, it'd be much appreciated.
Yes, I agree. I usually get nervous for what I want to say. My name is Lacy Weemhold, I live at 20017 Northeast 140th Street, directly south of the property. I just want to provide you some data. I'm a mortgage banker, banking for 30 years. The impact analysis they provided, the samples, and I think that's what Mr. Rotis was getting at, was from 1920 and 21. That was an unusually high market, and every house is being paid over market value. I don't think that's applicable to this particular situation. The copper leaf example he provided, again, not directly in their backyard, not 200 feet, and I think Mr. Ross's house is 297 feet from his backyard. The gate and the fence is going to be directly in front of my driveway, and it's going to look like a prison entrance, and it's very unsavory as far as the real estate agents go. I don't know anybody that's ever asked me in a real estate closing, was there any impact of a cell phone to the sale of your property? Most people will either just pass altogether because they're not interested in the property, or if there is any condition, it's going to be at the negotiating table before the contract is signed. So I can guarantee you, if someone drives up to my house, they see this prison gate, six foot tall gate and tower just to the north of my home, it will definitely impact people even going to the next step of looking or coming to the open house. So that's all I really wanted to say.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone else that would like to comment?
Austin Thomas, 20214 Northeast 140th Street. My property is directly to the east side of where this tower is going to be. Last year, when they submitted the request, it was up roughly 100 foot or a little bit further away, and now they've moved it closer to my property. I have lived here and grown up in this area for 15 years. I think I have looked at where my family lives, my parents live about two miles down the road, my brother lives a mile down the road. Satellite internet has been a thing in this area for the last five to 10 years. We have satellites in Excelsior, we have satellites on 69 Highway that direct us for internet access, and we're trying to say that a cell tower cannot give us service in different areas. It doesn't add up to me. 15 years, all I've wanted to do is live in this area. I run my business, I just recently built a barn to run my business out of this area. It doesn't make sense. I think anybody who drives down that road and sees a cell tower will understand where we're coming from. And so, yeah, I'd like for you guys to think about that. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to comment that opposes the application being Yes, ma'am.
My name is Natalie Better, and we live at 20401 Northeast 140th Street. We are candy corner from the property. I just, I'm very opposed to this tower. His comps that he's showing, was the towers already in place when the people were buying them? Because right now, we bought our properties before the tower is there. If we were to buy it again, I don't know that we would if it was, if a tower was already there. We moved to the country to be in the country, not in the city. I've had AT&amp;T service, I've had fine service, never had a problem with dropped calls streaming or anything, and it's just, it's very frustrating. I'm sad because Mr. Ross has had to fight this last year when he was healthy, and now he's sick and we're still fighting it again, and I know it's not good for him having cancer and trying to fight a cell phone tower going right behind his house. And it's, it's very frustrating to me because I've had cancer too, and I know what it's like to try to fight cancer and have to fight something like this. It's ridiculous. So I appreciate your time.
All right.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to comment that opposes the application being heard? With none, Mr. Clock, would you like to rebuttal any of the comments we just heard?
Unless the board has any questions for me, I do not.
You say that AT&amp;T pinpointed that spot. You do realize there were some other letters sent out for locations, don't you?
Yes.
So you're, so then it wasn't necessarily that spot.
The locations that were sent out were within the quarter mile search area that we had to work with. So what we have to deal with is, we have to have a willing landlord who will negotiate a lease with us. We can't force somebody into a lease.
You didn't do a lot of due diligence and follow up and talk with a lot of them, did you?
Absolutely. I came out, I came out here, probably personally came out here three times last time around. I was out here, did drives to neighbors, knocked on doors, left letters, we sent out letters. We don't just go with the first location. We, you know, we, actually, when it, when all carriers send out a search ring, they want three, they want three options to put the tower. They want three willing landlords. That's tough to do in a quarter mile search area. We did come out, we worked this, like I said, I worked this three or four times that I came out here.
Okay, I'll follow up on that.
Yeah, that's fine. Any other questions?
Board members have any other questions for the applicant? Thank you, Glenn.
Thank you.
I feel that the quantity of information that's been presented for this case, I would follow Kip's recommendation to continue this case to our August meeting. This will give the Planning and Zoning Board adequate time to review the applicant's documentation. The August Planning and Zoning meeting will be a discussion only. No applicant nor public comments will be heard. Regardless, the public is welcome to attend the meeting. So I would call for a motion to continue the cell tower vote to our August meeting.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a comment before we make that motion?
Yes, sir.
So typically, we've seen like a heat map, coverage maps on these applications. I haven't seen that in this exhibit. I think it'd be very helpful to have that. So, you know, if we continue it, we'd like to request that information be submitted so we can see actually what coverage we're looking at and the lapses thereof.
Mr. Chairman, if you want to keep the record open for the submission of any other written documentation within the next 10 days or so, that would be appropriate, and then you can close the record as of a certain time on a certain date, and then that would freeze the information, then it would be considered. But because we've only got a few weeks, we have, with the holiday, we're a little delayed with clearing the zone, and we don't have as much time between the meetings this time.
Okay.
And Chairman, my recommendation would be no later than the 21st to take any additional information. That's a Friday, that's a week from Friday.
C O B, close of business Friday, the 21st.
Yeah, so we would take anything from the applicant, opposition. If the board wants additional information, we will request it, and then close it at that time where you can just have discussion amongst yourselves on the first, and then take a vote on the first.
So if the board's requesting additional information, we could do that through, through staff?
Yes.
Okay. So to amend our motion, then we'll keep the record open until close of business on Friday, July 21st, where the board can request additional information. Opposition or proponents can submit to the P&amp;Z, and the applicant can also resubmit. So I would call for motion to continue the decision of the case until our August meeting, and at the same time, for the record, keep the record open until Friday, July 21st, close of business.
So move. Okay. I'll move. Yes, sir. I'll make the motion.
Okay. Sorry, second? Very well, roll call vote.
Mark Beggs.
Yes.
David Rotis.
Yes.
Terry Griffin.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
Brad Scarlett.
Yes.
Jerry Nolte.
Yes.
Randall Morris.
Yes.
Chairman Tom Decker.
Yes.
All right, the next case that we will hear this evening is case number July 23-139CUP. Ian, could we add the staff's report, please?
Yes, Chairman, we'd like to add the staff report as part of the official record.
So be it.
So this is another conditional use permit application that will probably look familiar to some of the members. It's been in front of the planning board twice. This will be the third time now. You can see it's up on the screen now, it's approximately three acres, outlined in yellow. It's part of Cary Hills North. There is a single-family home and an accessory structure, and it has access off of Hauser Street, and it's within a mile of city limits of Kansas City, and I'll show you that here in a minute. So the proposal is for an exotic animal facility. It's, the applicant will provide additional information with the business plan, but the business plan was submitted as part of the packet. It's not a facility where folks come and visit the animals, but the applicant will explain that. And the, there's a wide range of animals. You can see an animal list in the conditions. It ranges from the largest exotic animals, I believe, are the lynx, and it goes to, from lynx to goats to rabbits, chinchillas, there's a wide variety of animals. So here is the surrounding area. You can see the subject parcel in red right there. It's a pretty well-developed area. You can see everything in the orange and yellow are developed lots. The kind of light green is ag zoning. You can see Kansas City just to the south and west, city limits. The Johnson Ridge subdivision and eastern estates are located to the north and west, and those lots are as small as an acre, but there's a lot of three to five acre lots in this area as well. So again, we're going to talk about the comp plan and the Land Development Code. This property is also located in the urban services tier because it's so close to the city limits of Kansas City. This has those same six conditional use permit criteria, that the burden of proof is on the applicant to show how they meet those criteria or how those criteria are addressed. Those were included in the report that was sent to the board. Staff has received opposition, but we have not received any written opposition for this case. We did publish this case in the newspaper, posted a sign on site, and sent 36 certified letters. We received no objections from outside agencies. The applicant is licensed through USDA to have the animals and is current, and has actually passed the USDA's stricter guidelines and inspections. And there are letters of support, additional information, and a written interpretation that was requested of the Planning and Zoning Department that were added as part of that staff report. I will also tell you, the, the staff report, I think, had some of the attachments labeled wrong. I think all the correct attachments are there, they just may, the text may not match the attachment that's labeled, but everything is there. So staff has been consistent with this case. I believe we recommended denial each time it's come before the board. There's, you can see in the report, there's reasons for the denial. We believe the applicant has not addressed fully those conditional use permit criteria or the purpose and intent of the Land Development Code. However, if the Planning and Zoning Commission votes to approve, our recommendation is to approve with the 15 conditions that you can see in Exhibit A. Just a couple of highlights is the time period of five years, the applicant notifying the director each time an animal is either removed or brought into the facility, and the CUP may be revoked at any time. If there's validated public complaints, that would have to go to the county commission to be revoked. And the, with all of our other rural properties, in the Land Development Code, there is tables that limit properties that are less than 20 acres to one animal unit per acre. So we created that animal chart that's in the conditions to mimic that, but for some of the exotic animals and the other animals that Ms. Casterman has. So there is a condition that she shall remain under the one animal unit per acre. Currently with the animals she has, I believe she's just a little bit over. So that's staff recommendation. Now, the applicant is present and wants to provide some additional information along with the business plan, applicant, or the animal list, things like that. But I would be happy to answer any questions that the board members have.
All right, thank you, Kip. I do have one question is, is the applicant, have they not petitioned the Circuit Court of Clay County, and is this application and conditions of the CUP, are they not, has the court case been settled, or is this still an active, ongoing case?
So my understanding is the court case is still in the court system.
Would it not be premature to, I, I could say, I'll save this for the applicant. So, thank you, Kip. Do any board members have questions for staff? If the applicant would like to step forward and state your name and address, please?
Thank you, sir. My name is Brian Bear. I'm an attorney at Spencer Fain. I represent Jen Casterman, who is the applicant. And just to answer your question directly, the court case is still ongoing. I've been in contact with Kevin Graham, and through an agreement with him, given the length of time that had passed between the filing of the case in 2019, and the fact that the court had stayed the county commission, and given the fact that we have new commissioners on the commission, we agreed that we thought we would submit a new application so that, one, you could be updated of what has happened over the last three years, the new commissioners could be informed of the situation. We would love to settle the case, but obviously, with so many new commissioners on the commission, they need to have a record in front of them of what's on the ground today in 2023 rather than 2019. And so that was the agreement we worked out with the county counselor. We would love to resolve that today here, and hopefully, as we go through the discussion. We would love to resolve that today here, and hopefully, as we go through the discussion, we absolutely are flexible on working with planning and zoning, working with the commission, working with staff. The 15 conditions that Kip mentioned are absolutely acceptable to us. We are willing to work with that. So with that being said, hopefully, that answers your question of where we are, because I do understand the interplay of those issues.
Okay.
Okay.
Very well.
So I do want to highlight some of the issues, and, you know, I first want to thank Kip and staff. They've been professional throughout this process. We met with them yesterday. We've talked about some of those concerns. We do have some disagreements about some of the issues, but they've been professional. And hopefully, going through the facts, we can see that Ms. Kasterman, I believe, provides all the factors to grant a conditional use permit on the conditions that planning and zoning feel are adequate to protect the public. The one thing I wanted to emphasize that has kind of gotten lost in the wayside over the last 10, 12 years that she has operated this property is that Ms. Kasterman has been permitted before with a CUP. She, in 2016, she was granted an EDW permit. She adhered to all of those conditions. The issue that has occurred is when she sought a renewal in 2019, and that was denied. So this is not an instance where this is operated without the oversight of staff, without the oversight of the county. She has operated with that oversight. She's also operated with the oversight of the court. Part of the agreed-upon stay on the county's commission's order, which ordered the removal of these animals in 2019, was stayed under the understanding that there would be no code violations, no increase in animals. And she has maintained that throughout this entire period, over the last three years, since this came before, planning and zoning before. I'd also like to emphasize that these are not the types of animals that have been on Netflix, giant Bengal tigers. As Kip said, the largest animal is a lynx. It's about 30 to 40 pounds, and there's only two of those, Canadian lynxes, with two Eurasian lynxes. Everything else goes down as far as weight. Everything else is smaller. And in fact, we're talking about animals, in some cases, they're only two pounds, like a finnic fox or a yellow-footed tortoise. And that's what I would end this with, is this is not an all-or-nothing request. One of the things that I want to emphasize, and I've talked with Kevin about this, is, you know, this is not a situation where if we can have, if we can't get 100% of what we want, we're going to go and be unhappy. We are willing to be flexible. And I do think, as we look at some of the animals at issue, the planning and zoning should ask themselves, is there really not conditions, and there's not a situation where we could have a two-pound finnic fox on a three-acre lot in rural residential R1, or a yellow-footed tortoise, or any of the other small animals? We would like to take those off the table. And frankly, as her attorney, it would probably put us in a more difficult place with the Circuit Court, because one of the things I emphasize to Judge Alexander is, you know, are we really going to sit here and say that a two-pound finnic fox with giant ears is somehow a danger to the public? I think that's my best fact in the court case. I'd like for you guys to remove that and handcuff me a little bit by at least getting some of these animals over to the column of something that would be allowed. But I'll try to go very briefly through the factors. I know that there's a lot of things on the commission.
Is the animals you're talking about, are they part of these 15 items on Exhibit A?
There's 15 conditions. The animals are listed on that list in Exhibit A as well.
So you were in agreement with the 15 items, but now you're not?
The 15 conditions that they want to put in place?
We're in agreement with the 15 conditions.
Okay. I'm sorry, go ahead.
So staff's recommendation that, hey, these are the 15 conditions, also a cap on the number of animals, no increasing in the number of animals. We are fine with that. That's what we've been operating under the last three years. So, you know, Kip did talk about the lot in question. The one thing I want to emphasize about this is that this is zoned as R1 residential, that's rural residential. And while there has been development around the area to the south, it is still largely rural in character to the west and north. This is not a situation where there's been dense development. If you look, 7815 Hauser is located on that dot in the center, and as you can see, it's still largely rural in character going through that. So the first issue and the first factor is that it deals with the intent of the comprehensive plan. One of the things that I want to emphasize is that if you look at the code, the purpose of the R1 designation is that it is to allow residential landowners to maintain a limited number of large animals. That's directly from the code. The idea is that horses, cows, large format animals are going to be part of rural R1 designations. That's why they are designated that way. And we are not asking to have permitted any animal that is large like a horse. In fact, that has been the character of her neighborhood. Her next-door neighbor, who is here to speak tonight, maintains horses on this property. So this is not a situation where we have a suburban plat next door to her. There is a suburban plat to the south, but I think, as you'll see, it's not being affected by her use. Kip was correct. This is not a facility that's open to the public. There is not traffic. This is not a situation where she's trying to run some type of commercial-like agricultural development out of her home. So this is where we do respectfully disagree with staff's recommendation. I do think Kip put forward in a very professional manner that, hey, if this is going to be allowed, there are conditions that they would like to have, and so that is something that we're open to. But the idea that there are no animals on a rural R1 that could be permitted under a CUP, given that this has been subject to a permit before in 2016, I just don't think is within the land code. There has to be some of these animals on the list that I think we can all agree with are not dangerous. I don't think anyone here is going to say that a yellow-footed tortoise that weighs a pound is somehow a danger to the public or affecting somebody's property values, or chinchillas. I do understand that there's a discussion over the Canadian lynxes and the servals, which are about a 20 to 30-pound cat, but I believe I can address those as we go forward. But for the vast majority of these, I think we can put that into the column of something that should be permissible under the CUP. So I do want to talk a little bit about non-conforming uses. You know, there are some issues in the court case about her use and whether it predates the code, and there is a provision in the 2011 code that says, non-conforming uses that existed prior to the enactment of 2011 code. Basically, as long as you're not adding to animals, you can continue to do that. You know, I do think that that's a question for the court, but I do think where she would rather operate is under a CUP that's expressly granted by planning and zoning and by the commission, rather than having to have a grandfathered-in, permitless type of existence. You know, we'd rather have a permit where we're held to account, which is subject to the conditions that you feel are appropriate and that staff feels is appropriate. As I said earlier, she has held a CUP before. She had no violations for that CUP for five years, and we are absolutely fine with putting a cap in place. One of the, if you look at the law on non-conforming uses, the courts and even the code are all kind of in compliance with it, where they say, it's not beneficial to go in and say, you've got to stop exactly what you're doing right now at this moment. Instead, the public policy is to gradually move the non-conforming use to a conforming use. And that's what we're proposing with this cap. This is not an expanding facility. Put a cap on it. We revisit it through the permitting process, and gradually, as the character starts to change, then we can talk about moving that in a direction. And that's the public policy for dealing with non-conforming uses, rather than abrupt changes, which is frankly what led to the 2019 lawsuit and why she had to run into court. I want to talk about public health and safety, since that is a real, that is an issue. As Kip said, she is subject to regulation by the USDA. The USDA has stricter regulations than the county commission. She has had no violations. The animals in question are non-predatory towards humans. None of them are the type that are like lions and tigers and bears. They are much smaller than that. And they are not roaming free. They are in large steel commercial cages with locks. One of the things that came out in the case is that Ms. Kasterman, over the better part of a decade, has spent over $100,000 to fence in for security upgrades on her property. So this is not a situation where they're in tiny little kennels that you get from Petco. These are very large, secure facilities. And to emphasize that fact, she's been operating for 11 years. There's never been an animal that's escaped. There's never been an injury on her property. You have the benefit of empirical time to know that she's been able to responsibly manage these animals. You know, this is just reemphasizing what I said earlier about the nature of the animals. None of these are large. As far as the servals, the lynxes, they are, number one, they're in these secure commercial cages. They are not roaming free. They have never gotten out. And one of the things that the commission can put in place is a cap so that they don't expand, and she has no intention to get more of these types of animals. The animals that she is interested in, she wants to take care of the existing animals that she has, because, as you'll see, they have nowhere else to go, really, and focusing on some of the smaller animals. That's just basically what I've said previously. You know, the one thing I just want to emphasize is that the court order that's been in place has said that it terminates, and the commission's order comes into place if there's a violation, if an animal gets loose, if somebody gets hurt. So she has been under that microscope with judicial supervision, staff supervision, USDA supervision, and has not had an incident. I want to talk a little bit about property value, because I know that that was a big issue that Kip emphasized when we talked with them yesterday. One of the things that I wanted to point out is, we looked at sales data for houses and in the immediate area, and I think from the previous CUP that you just heard, the figure that was bandied about is it's about $175 per square foot is kind of the average within this county. That's basically what I found, too, going through sales data. So we know that there's no evidence from staff, and, you know, I understand that they feel that this is our burden, and we're happy to prove that, but there's no evidence that has shown an adverse impact on property. And in fact, when we look at some of the homes that are currently on the market that are close to Ms. Kasterman, we are seeing things about above the median. So this is a property that is currently on the market. I'll just advance a slide so you can kind of see. If you look at Hauser Road and the lake, that is where Ms. Kasterman is. The property in question is over here, so it is close to her, to her property. So currently, right now, we do have large valuable properties that are going on the market and are above the median. But one of the things that we do look at are actual sales that occurred during the pendency with the court case where it was stayed. So this is when she was operating her business. There was, in 2020, a house sold for 209 square feet. And to show where this is, Ms. Kasterman's house is right here. Again, this is the Hauser Road area. This house in question is right here on Windsor Road, so it's very, very close. And to show an even closer house, this is her next-door neighbor. This was able to sell for $400,000 at $176 per square feet. So we do have things within line of what the county has as an average. So one of the questions you would have is, if you start to move away from her property, do property values go up or down? If they're going up precipitously as you start to go away from her, then that's probably an indication that it's affecting it. So as we start to go south, which is the platted area immediately south to her, we have exactly the same 175 per square feet. This is from the same development to the south of her. This one is selling for far less. It's $94 a square feet was the sale. And this one is $155 per square feet. Again, less than what houses are selling for immediately, immediately in her area. And to show where this is, these are the houses that are down here to the south, 127th Street, 125th Street. So as we start to look at the fourth issue, access routes, I don't think staff feels it's an issue. There is, you know, it's not open to the public, so this is not creating traffic. So I don't think there's a lot to say about it. Adequate public safety, transportation, and utility facilities. I believe, given the public safety issues that we've already addressed about the security she has in place, I think we've addressed that. But I do want to emphasize again that the trash and water service is already provided. We've worked with, that's part of the conditions that are in place, that she would have an animal waste service. She has that already. She wants, she's fine with that as a condition, because she's already doing it. And it's always going to be subject to USDA inspections, which are more stringent than what the land code provides. There's also the issue of hours of operation, traffic generation, lighting, and noise. One of the things that came up in a previous hearing was the idea that these animals, I think people made the assumption, because these are cats, that they are nocturnal. These are not nocturnal animals. They sleep with the sun like everybody else. She's had no noise complaints over the past couple of years. She has had no noise complaints, I think, ever. You honestly cannot see any of the animals from her parcel. She has large, what are they, seven-foot fences? Eight-foot fences with shade cloth on them. You literally cannot see any of these animals from the road. You can't see them from adjoining property lines. She is, honestly, you would not know that these animals are there unless you read the sign out front, which she's supposed to, which she has posted per the conditions of her permit. So the other thing I'd point out is, when this came before planning and zoning, there was a lot of activity. We expect that there's probably going to be some comments tonight as well, both for and against. But the one thing that I found interesting is that after this went to the Circuit Court, and the Circuit Court put in place a stay and put conditions on her, the complaints went away. We didn't get a single complaint during the last three years that this has been on file in the Circuit Court case, knowing that if a complaint did happen, Judge Alexander could dissolve it and put us back in a situation where these animals would have to go off-site. So, you know, I look at what's happened over the last three years versus what happens when there's an opening for public comment. And, you know, I understand that folks have strong opinions about this, but I do want to point out that the use that we're asking for is not an inanimate object. We're not asking to put some type of improvement or some physical object on her property. We are talking about living things. And one of the things I want to point out about, especially the servals and the lynxes, they have pre-existing injuries and disabilities that they just are not marketable to another USDA license holder, because that's all she can sign, can sell to with these types of animals. And because of that, the reason she went to court is because, in order telling her to remove these animals from the property is basically in order to have her euthanize them, because there's nowhere else for them to go. So I do want to point out that we are talking about stakes here of animals that do go out into the community, especially the smaller animals, the finnic foxes, the coati, and some of the others, for educational and purposes. She was up north in St. Joe at a library yesterday showing children. You've seen letters of support that are provided with you of how she goes out in the community and enriches the community. We would ask that this CUP be granted. And one of the things I'd emphasize is that this planning and zoning board can put conditions on this. We welcome those conditions. We want to work with you. If there's additional information or additional discussions, we're willing to table this and have those discussions. We want to work with you. We want to work under a permit, so.
All right, thank you, sir. Did any of the board members have questions? I'm sorry, what's your name?
Brian Baer.
I'm sorry, Brian. Thank you.
Yeah.
Board members have any questions for Mr. Brian?
Yes, you said you were interested in moving from non-conformity to a conforming use.
from nonconformity to, to a conforming use or conforming use. Have you approached staff with that plan? How you plan to get there?
I think that our discussions are to talk about putting a limit in place. We had had discussions of a cap. There was a discussion in a previous hearing that somehow this facility was getting bigger. That was a fact that was noted in the last one. That has not been true. We are, the, the facility is actually getting smaller. There are less animals at the facility than there were in 2019. And so one of the ways I think we get there is by having a cap in place with a current CUP. And then as we revisit it with renewals, having that discussion going forward of moving that down. And that's going to gradually change the character. Some of these animals, you know, are, they have a natural lifespan. So there are ways for us to work with it. I, I know for Ms. Kasterman, for the existing animals, making sure that they are cared for as they age and as they pass away is very important for her. And that may be a natural way for us to deal with that issue of transitioning to a use.
So just looking at exhibit, I think this is Exhibit A. Send staff report. So you've got 12, 13, 17, 18, basically 18 of the cats.
Is that correct?
Yeah, four lynxes. I mean, just, I'm going from the, so to me, those are the, those are the ones that pose a hazard. So of those group of animals, what is lifespan of those? Are they 10 years? Are they two years? What is that? What are you looking at?
Obviously, each of those species different. I can give you specifics on each one of them. I know that two out of that 18, Kip has said, fall under like domestic class size, the leopard cat and the chaffrey cat. The servals, the oldest one on record is 29 and a few months. But like a regular house cat, some of them are, you know, 12 to 16 years. You know, 20 is like, you know, you're glad you had that much time to spend with them. The lynxes, the Canadian lynxes, I was like, mine are getting up there in age. So the 15 is, one in captivity is one of theirs. And mine are, you know, getting up there. The Eurasians, also if you get 15, there's, you know, some that are 20, that's like an amazing stat, but not getting over that. Caracals also are around the servals thing as far as that. So I'd say like early twenties is, you know, like your, like an old, like a house cat. Age basically like that, they're not going to live longer than your oldest house cat, but you got lucky to live that long.
So if you were to put a number on that, say your youngest one, your youngest animal in that group to, to the average lifespan, are we talking 10 years?
I was like, my youngest cat right now is, I would say, two and a half, three years old. And then I've got some that are in their twenties. Then the lynxes, they're all over 10, so.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I've got some questions or some comments. I was present for the original conditional use permit in July of 2015. I think there's other members up here tonight that are also familiar with the infancy of the case. And at the time, I really admired what Jennifer was doing and her cause. And, and I think we're all kind of excited to, to jumpstart her program. I think she did petition the county commission. There were some minor changes made in the, in the stipulations in the CUP that were to her favor, which I think is good. But, and then a few months before her CUP is up for renewals, when she petitions and files a case with the Clay County Circuit Court. And we were told to stand down, that we can't hear the case. We ultimately did rehear the case in, in April, May of 2021. I do know, you said, she said no more than 54 animals in the last three years. In April of 21, we had, Ms. Kasterman noted herself she had 65 animals. Part of the conditions of the original CUP were to put up a sign stating that notifying Pastor Byers if this is a EDW, the sign was not put up until May of 21, nearly six years after the approval of the original CUP.
Lighting and screening?
Yeah, the, the screening and the landscaping was brought up in the April 21 meeting. It had still not been completed, although it was a condition of the original CUP issued five and a half years prior, six years prior. No sign erected. Fast forward to July of 23, there's been no emergency plan filed with planning and zoning, which was one of the conditions, original, one of the conditions in 2021 and one of the conditions today. Another condition on all three occasions was to have a certificate of insurance on file with P and Z that described and listed the basis of the animals in captivity. We have a certificate of, of insurance on file, but the description of operations is blank. So it's basically useless. And we were excited for Jennifer in July of 2015, but she has set a precedent to consistently disregard the conditions that the county, and she accepted that the county imposed, and she accepted and agreed to. She has consistently disregarded these conditions. And I heard the same thing in July of 2015, that we're good with all these conditions. And then right before her renewal, we go to court. We, we don't like the conditions. We want to change them. I'm hearing in 21, we're good with these conditions. The 21 attempt was denied. We're hearing tonight that you're good with the 15 conditions, but we've heard all this before. And Jennifer set a precedent to disregard and disrespect the county commission and the planning and zoning board. And I'm having a really hard time to be in favor of this CUP based on the nearly eight year history of noncompliance that we've witnessed with your applicant.
Well, to respond to that, if I may?
Yes, sir.
So going backwards on this, to talk about the 2019 issue, the conditions never were in place because the commission ultimately denied her license in Toto. So there was, I understand that planning and zoning put those in place. But what we actually had as the final decision was nothing. Complete denial. And that's why we went to court. So I, I appreciate your position on that.
Well, the, the county commission approved the CUP, the Clay County Commission approved the CUP September 21 of, of 2015.
Correct. I'm talking, going backwards on the 2019 issue because you said that you, you put in place conditions on 2019 and that we accepted those. But ultimately, what came out of the commission was no license. So at least in 2019, we never had a chance to comply because what ultimately happened was the commission denied us a license in Toto. So there were, you know, whether the conditions would be adhered to or not, we didn't have a license in 2019. It was not renewed. As far as.
Are you talking about the permit in 2019?
2019, yes.
It wasn't up till, for renewal until July of 20, of 2020?
2020. Well, there is the 2019 and then the 2020, after it came back from Judge Alexander. Okay, I'm tracking now, I apologize. You're talking about the previous.
I think the applicant was unhappy with the conditions set forth, filed suit in December 19 to, anyway, I'm, I'm sorry.
Sure, no, no.
I was like, I think I see, make sure I'm clear. So you're saying that I filed in the 2019, six months prior to filed against the conditions?
For renewal of the CUP.
Yeah. So I did, we did petition to the court because we had filed against one condition, asking why four servals were allowed, but what the others weren't. And that was what the court case was. And that had been filed for years. And then we commissioned to the judge, asking them to address it, knowing that I had six months to start my process for renewal and wanted that cleared up and not hanging over our heads there. So that had been there and it had just, you know, they hadn't scheduled it. So that's what that was, if that helps with the timeline there.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
You know, I understand your position. I think a way that if there are deliverables that you want before it issues, one possible way is to do a conditional approval and to say that, you know, our approval of it only happens once. You've delivered everything that you're supposed to and we're more than happy to do that. You know, I was not involved in those previous cases. I'm involved now. I can tell you that, you know, I've worked with Jen over the past three and a half years. And she is very motivated to quit going through the process of, of courts and using the judiciary. She would like to work with the commission and we would like to work with you in order to get to some type of resolution.
Just to clarify what you just said, you've had since 2015 to meet some of these conditions, like the vegetative screening and the insurance things on file. And somehow between 2015 and 2023, you've never had an opportunity to take care of the, specifically the vegetative screening?
I was like, I'm sorry if I comment. For the screening, I was like, screening was provided. There was done. It's a question of what is the screening, what works, what doesn't. Obviously, things have to grow, things don't make. Kip, at the last, at the last one for the renewal, it came out before, we talked about a couple of areas where he suggested to add some screening, but that everything was actually pretty good there. And so then we had a little map that he did and I've put in place there and more since then. As far as the signs go, like you had said, staff had told you to hold off on, you know, action or something. Staff had told me to hold off on the sign when I requested that originally. That is the only thing. Then as soon as, then I went to Kip for that. He was going to give me a picture of what the other EDW sign was. And so then I ordered five and I have them on each property or each, facing each property. So it went above and did additional for it, you know, ensuring that it was covered. As far as the insurance goes, insurance has been accepted. It hasn't been a problem if there was something more detailed needed on it. I have not been asked or questioned that. It was the insurance, the main company has gone through since, from the beginning there. And then the other, you addressed another thing.
Emergency plan with the P and Z.
Kip and I have gone over to the emergency plan. We haven't done it this week, but it's the, I mean, I have a comprehensive. USDA has actually now added to their license that you have one of the stricter things is having the comprehension and emergency plan. Kip does have that in the site plan access. But for safety, we don't publicly have on record allow for you, that to be seen. But I'm happy to sit down and show it to any one of you anytime. But it's for the safety of myself and the animals, we can't publicly post that.
And, and I discussed that with Kevin, that under Section 620021, it is a closed record for security plans on property, that public governmental bodies can close that. Obviously, we want to make sure that there are not people who go on the land and understand where her locks are and what her codes are to the door. So it is on file. It is just being kept closed and nonpublic.
The emergency plan is on file.
Correct.
On file with whom?
Does Kip should have it?
Kip, do you have it? I believe we discussed that with the emergency plan.
So would Chairman like me to address a couple of things?
Sure.
So staff has never enforced the regulator, the conditions because the case has either been in court or been denied. So we've never actively enforced those conditions. I, I know for this application, so we've treated this as a new application. They reapplied, even though that court case is going on. With this application, I know for sure I don't have an emergency plan. I would have to look back at the previous cases to see if one was submitted. So I don't know the answer to that. And then also, there was some discussion about nonconforming use. A nonconforming use is a use that was legally established. So my, staff's opinion of nonconforming use is when this was established, it would have had to been legal. So the previous code actually had stricter regulations on exotic, dangerous, wild animals. So staff doesn't believe this anywhere complies with nonconforming use because you could only have exotic, dangerous, wild animals with a conditional use permit, but you had to have ag zoning. It didn't even allow it in the R1 zoning. So just to address those, those issues.
All right, thank you, Kip. Do any board members have questions for the applicant? Additional? Thank you, Brian.
Thank you for your time.
Yep. Is there anyone on, in the audience that would like to comment that supports the case being heard? Yes, sir. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that supports the case being heard? Yes, sir.
Support.
Support. Yes, ma'am.
My name's Andrea List. I live across the street from Jen at 7814 Hauser. I'm one of those that take advantage of the agricultural delights of the area. I have a little over 19 acres. I have eight horses. And since all this has started, I can assure you, unfortunately, my horses have gotten out several times. It's just kind of part of having them, unfortunately. And people aren't always as good about closing the gate. My late husband's the only person that was ever allowed back on the property more than once when they got out. And as far as Jen's animals, I've seen all of them. I've been around all of them. They are not as apt to maim, harm, hurt someone. More, my horses would be far more in a way apt to do it because they're prey animals and that's their instinct. Jen has been a good neighbor. I've never had any issues with her facility. I truly admire what they do as far as the educational side of it. I'm not sure I would have the energy to do that. I do good to keep up with my horses. So, but thank you. I wish you would let her have her CUP and have some peace.
All right, thank you.
And Chairman, Chairman, that reminded me, I failed and we got a, a letter of support after the staff report was issued. So Cheryl's going to come out and hand out an additional letter.
All right.
That'll be Exhibit B for this case.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to comment that supports the case? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Kelly White. I've worked with Ms. Kasterman and been friends with her for a numerous amount of years, but since she's had her exotic animals. I work on the facility. I, you know, we have a very, very secure facility. We only see the neighbors, you know, to the right and left of us. I can't really see the people behind us. But, you know, I do drive, you know, that way just to kind of see. I don't, I don't really see anything that you can see from their streets that really, you know, is an eyesore or that you would even know that this facility exists. I have three locks. I have to go into and unlock and lock behind me. It is literally one of the most secure facilities. Like sometimes I even get frustrated because I have to lock so many locks behind me and before me before I can even get into the cats. You know, we have people drive by and just numerous people. I'm not saying it's harassment, but we have a lot of different traffic. I notice when I'm there during the day, working outside, that just turn around in the driveway. I don't know if maybe that's because of the sign that, you know, we've had to put out or whatever. But I do know that, you know, when we had talked, I was here in 2019. And as soon as we knew that we, you know, were not doing as we were supposed to, she got the signs up. I make sure that they're, nothing's covering them. You know, it's a very important part of my life to be able to interact with these animals, to be able to educate kids. I've done, like they had said, you know, we did two programs in St. Joe. She did a couple, a couple of weeks ago. I mean, preservation of species. If people don't know about an animal, they, they're not as apt to care about it. You know, I know that, you know, she is very genuine and very responsible as far as making sure that the public safety comes first. She doesn't want any, you know, thing that's bothering her neighbors. If, you know, the neighbors that do speak to us and if they have a problem, all they do is say so. And we, we. all they do is say so and we, we try to correct it. She's a good neighbor. She's a good friend. She's a good businesswoman. She's, she deserves this. This is her life. It's my life. And I really feel like some of the things that keep coming up, just as you guys had said, that she maybe wasn't following in suit like she was supposed to because of, you know, they, one person said, no, don't do that yet because we're in court. But I do feel like sometimes the same things are being overlooked. Like we've put the bamboo in place and the trees in place and things, but it takes time for that to grow.
All right.
So I, I mean, I just, I, I feel like that, you know, sometimes she's kind of singled out with the situation, but you know, it is what it is. And we try to do whatever we can to keep everybody happy and feel safe.
All right. Very well, thank you. If anyone else has anything like to add, if you have anything new that you'd like to say?
My name's Della Grantham. I've been with Jennifer since she had her first serval 15 years ago. There's, I'm 75 years old. I still go in with all of these animals every day. There's not a thing mean or, I, I just can't explain to people how these animals cannot, some of them can never go anyplace else. We have animals that have been abused. We've had animals that, they cannot fend for themselves. People have mistreated them and there's just no other way to tell you that these animals have nowhere else to go. I do scoop poop every single day. I'm a glorified pooper scoop. So I don't want anybody saying they find feces on their property. You know, this is not happening. I just want you to know that my personal, I, I watch these people drive by and I'm wondering, what are they thinking they're going to see? We've got trees. We've got signs. We've got a gate that you can't get into. I don't, I don't know what they're trying to do, but they make me nervous. I go there to do a job and to take care of these animals that can't take care of themselves. And I'm just tired of these people harassing. And that's exactly what it is. It's harassment.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak that supports the application? With none, is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment that opposes the application? Yes, sir.
Greg Ayers, 8006 Windsor Drive. My property is adjacent to the south boundary of her property, covers about 75 to 80% of her back south zone. Again, this is a residential area, zoned for R1. There's no place for wild, dangerous and exotic animals. We have kids running around the neighborhood and all it takes is one time for something to happen and one of those kids to get hurt. The, when the first permit was granted, there were a lot, large number of people at this meeting opposing her, but yet the board went ahead and allowed the permit. The permit was granted with conditions and Ms. Castleman failed to follow a lot of them. She increased the number of animals. She failed to establish a vegetarian boundary inside her property line. Along with that, her perimeter fence was hastily put up 30 years ago by the previous owner. And the only reason it was put up, he had dogs that come across onto my property and bit my 10-year-old. No, luckily no damage, but 15 minutes later, that fence was put up. It wasn't designed for exotic animals to keep them in their place. It's easily could be tore down. They went ahead and put additional to make the height 10 feet, but they didn't put any additional supports on it or whatever. So that's a little scary in itself. It's not that these animals are soft and cuddly. They are considered wild, dangerous and exotic. And I can sit on my deck during mating season and hear these lynx growl and it's not your typical domestic cat. They call it that in the report, but it's, those aren't domestic cats. You wouldn't let your kids play with them. As far as the property value, I've been, if I decide to sell if and when my property, I've been advised that on the disclosure statement, I'm going to have to disclose that this wild, endangered exotic animal facility exists between, on my backside of my property just to protect myself so that nobody comes back and tries to sue that they didn't know it. But that's also going to eliminate a lot of purchasers because they're not going to want to have that on their back lot. And of the four letters that are in the staff report supporting Ms. Castleman, only one was in the neighborhood and that was the first lady that spoke. All the others are from Bonner Springs and other locations that have no, no knowledge of what the neighborhood is and how it responds. And we, the last time, two years ago, when the permit was denied, when it went to the county commissioners, one of the commissioners made the statement that this permit should have never been given the first time. So that tells you that, you know, there's some, you know, consequence. And as you stated, she's failed to follow the conditions and blatantly increased the animals and did things that, you know, day late and a dollar short after the horses are out of the barn.
All right.
Thank you.
Duly noted, thank you. Anyone else that would like to comment that opposes the application being heard? Yes, sir.
My name is George Totten. I live at 7616 Northeast Windsor Drive, Kansas City. My property is probably 1,500 feet from hers diagonally. I'm, uh, this is the third one of these meetings I've attended on this issue. I don't, don't think we've moved the ball forward on any of it. I think it's rehashing and rehashing. Let me get my glasses out so I can see what I wrote down here. Okay, I live in the area. Some of the stuff is the same thing that Mr. Ayers just covered.
Yeah, if you've got something new to add, that'd be, that'd be good.
Well, I'm trying.
George?
All right. Up your own thing, it says that the, after three years, most of the complaints went away. I think we need to be reminded that in a major part of the past three years, there was a global pandemic that affected people's lives negatively and they probably didn't have a lot of time to dedicate to getting rid of nuisances in their neighborhood. Okay? Okay, I said at the last meeting, if this was located, say 10 miles north of 92 Highway instead of where it's at, we wouldn't be having these meetings. This could all be ironed out without dragging the public in here and have to speak for or against. Like I say, a lot of the pro is, people on the pro side, like I say, it's opinion. And, you know, opinion shouldn't trump law, so. I thought after the last meeting that the count, the board had voted unanimously to stop this, yet we find out that it's still going on.
We're just doing our job the best we can.
I would like to, yeah, I understand that, but how many, how many second chances do you get? You know?
This is a third chance for this one.
Yeah, okay, so. Okay, I guess there's not much else to say.
Okay.
I, I would, I've got some pictures here and they may be unrelated, but I've got some trail cameras out in my, out in my, at my garden so I can monitor the raccoons coming in to eat my sweet corn. And recently, I have found, I have a red fox. I have two coyotes. I've got, I've never had these before. And I, I just would like to be reassured that something, noises made by these animals aren't attracting these predators.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that.
Because they're right, like I said, they're right in my garden, 100 feet from my house. So if they're, you know, hunters use the dying bird sound call to attract predators when they hunt them. Well, if she's making, if her animals are making noises that are attracting predators, I think it's a threat to us all. Okay.
All right, thanks, sir.
I'll let it go with that, thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to comment that opposes the application being heard? We've got a room full of people and it's getting late, so make it quick.
My name is Michelle Fairhurst. I live at 8003 Windsor Drive, so I am to the south. And as for some of the things that her representative said about not being able to see and whatnot, yes and no. Because of the topography of the land, the, my land actually overlooks. So all the whole front of our great big old ranch house, big ranch house, overlooks. And from all our front windows, we can see into all the pins and see everything. And when the wind blows, we can see the, the shade cloth flapping in the breeze. And at night, there's bright green lights around the top that leads my friends that come over and say, oh, what you got going on over there? You got a party bar? We're almost 40. No, no, there's no party bar, stop. So it is a little more intrusive to neighbors further away than maybe they realize. And yes, as somebody who has driven over there, because it is a cul-de-sac, it's a convenient place to turn around when you forget something at the house. You know, from the front side, yes, it seems more secluded because her property slopes downhill and then I'm on the uphill of the next slope. So we see a lot more of that. There is also more growth in that area. The committee, I believe, approved a subdivision off 132nd and Eastern that is going to be one acre lots. So there is going to be many more houses close by. It's actually between that house that was cited that's for sale for over a million dollars and her house. So there is growth in the area. And the last thing I wanted to say is if everyone who here is here tonight to oppose this, maybe doesn't want to speak by themselves, if you would please stand or raise your hand so that the committee knows just how many of us are not comfortable with having exotic and dangerous and wild animals in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Got it. Thanks. Is there anyone else that would like to comment that opposes the application being heard?
My name's Roy Lohman. I live at 8018 Windsor Drive. My property touches the southeast corner of her property, just a few feet. But I'm just going to bring it short. I agree with what everybody said ahead of me. But the main thing is these cats, and the lawyer tried to steer you clear of the, they're not cute cuddly animals like rabbits and foxes. It, if you Google little lynx weighs, they're 30 to 60 pounds or something like that and, or not like a house cat. They're 40 some inches long or whatever, but that's all I got to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else that would like to comment that opposes the case? You make it quick.
Okay. Regarding the emergency plan, I just wonder in a case of like a structured fire, what is the emergency plan? What, you're just going to let the animals burn? You're going to turn them loose? And the thing is, if you call the fire department, they're in Smithville. That's about 12 miles away and it has to come down country roads. There's a Kansas City station about four miles away, but I don't know whether or not they would answer the call or not, so.
All right, I think we're kind of getting off topic here, so. Okay, we hear what you're saying. Yep. Would it, Brian or Jennifer, do you want to rebuttal any of the comments we've just heard?
I will be very, very brief because I understand you got one right after us. That's going to go long. So what I will just say is on the fencing, there are two sets of fencing that have been put in place. It's not just the old fencing. It is a 10-foot fence. 10, 8?
It was raised from a four foot to a six and there is eight foot fence in, in the inner perimeter that was added, but.
Eight, eight foot, okay.
That original fence has been upgraded and was years ago.
Apologies, I was trying to listen to her and I must have misheard. So it's an eight-foot fence and there is two set of fencing in the facility. The other thing is there is a comment that a lynx could be 100 something pounds. If you look in the packet that staff provided, they are what, 40 pounds?
Yeah, it was like the Eurasians can be heavier than the Canadians.
But they do not go beyond 40 pounds and none of these animals are that size.
All right.
Just wanted to make that clear, but we thank you for your time and consideration.
We're getting, we're getting ready to close public participation. We're, we're. Sir? Sir, we're closing public participation. Do any of the board members have questions for staff or the applicant? Like I said before, I bought for Jennifer's program and I admire what she's doing, but I question her business ethics and her business professionalism. And this is, we're coming up on eight years. We still have some of the original conditions from the original CUP that have not been fulfilled. She's out of compliance, eight years running. And with that remark, if there's any additional conversation the board wants to have is fine. I would call for a motion to deny renewal of the conditional use permit for the Castleman Exotic Dangerous Wild Animal Facility. Motion to deny.
Yeah, I just want to echo your, the chairman's comments. I mean, I, I saw this case when I was chairman and I've toured the facility and it's been a long, it's been a long ride here. And I'm with you, I, I agree what they're doing is great, but I just don't think it's the right size.
Okay, is that a second?
That's a second, yeah, sorry.
You got a third, so. Okay, we've got a first and a second to deny renewal of the CUP.
Yes, and just to be clear, the motion is to deny. So a yes would be to approve that motion and no would be to go against that motion.
It's a yes or no vote.
Are you ready for a roll call?
Yes, sir.
David, David Rotis.
Yes.
Mark Beggs.
Yes.
Terry Griffin.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
Brad Scarlett.
Yes.
Jerry Nolte.
Yes.
Randall Morris.
Yes.
And Chairman Tom Decker.
Yes.
Motion carries.
For the headline of the show. Think if, if the public wants to converse or visit, if you want to step into the hallway, that'd be fine, please. The next case we'll hear tonight is case number July 23-140 CUP. And I'd like to ask for staff support, please.
Yes, Chairman, we'd like to add the staff report is part of the official record.
So be it.
And so let me get back there on our PowerPoint, but I do want to point out that even after this case is over, we'll still be in session. We do have a case after this.
Yes, sir.
So if the member, anybody involved in this case would please exit because we'll still be in session or, or stay, you're welcome to stay. So this is a conditional use permit for the Law Enforcement Resource Center proposed by the Clay County Sheriff's Department. I've got the property pulled up on the screen now. The overall acreage, there's about 500 acres total that's in that area. That's, that's part of that ownership. This is about 63 acres that you can see roughly in the purple. It's not exact. It's zoned agricultural. It would have access off of Stillhouse Road and it's within a mile of the city of Missouri City. So the proposal is, it's a conditional use permit application. So the proposal is, it's a conditional use permit application for a law enforcement resource center which would include a training center and three outdoor ranges. So you can see one of the site plans that was provided by the sheriff's department that was also included in the packet. There are some additional site plans. And so the first phase would include the training center and the three outdoor ranges. I know the sheriff's department will provide more info on the overall plan. There are additional structures and future phases. The sheriff's department did submit a business plan and multiple site plans that give additional details that were included in the staff report. Being late, I'm not going to go over those. There was additional information supplied by the applicant as well. So here is the area. You can see the subject parcel. You can see Missouri City to the south, kind of in that shaded gray color. That's 210 Highway to the south. In green to the west is Ferris Farm. So it's a large, large amount of ag zoning in this area, but you can see just to the west of the subject par, property, there is some smaller residential zone lots in this area as well. So it is a mix. So again, we're going to talk about the comprehensive plan and the land development code. The comp plan indicates this is, properties located in the rural low density tier. That area is basically everything east of Liberty and the northern sections of Clay County. And this, just like the previous cases, has those six criteria for any conditional use permit. The burden of proof is on the applicant to show how they're addressing or meeting these conditions or criteria. So staff has received opposition. I think there's, obviously the room's still full. I think there's some folks that want to talk about this case today. We did publish this in the newspaper, posted a sign on site and sent 11 certified letters. We did not receive any objections from outside agencies. We, one of the conditions that you will see is that the, we would require Health Department or MDNR approval for the proposed septic system. We have not received that yet. Actually, the Fishing River Fire District contacted us today. They want to make sure that if this is approved, that there are hydrants included with this project. And the Public Water Supply District Number Five has said water is available for this facility. So obviously, the forest shooting range, the land development code requires the conditional use permit. Now, there's a special section in that land development code. It's Section 151-6.2T that gives additional details about shooting ranges. I'm just going to go over a couple of the highlights. The, the whole section of code was included in the report that was posted on the website and given to the board. But a couple of the highlights is the, the county commission, upon recommendation from this board, can vary from the standards listed in that section. That section does list the hours of operation from 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM. You'll notice in the business plan that the sheriff's department is proposing different hours, so that condition would need to change if this is approved with what the sheriff's department wanted, or you could stay with the, what the land development code requires. It also requires the perimeter of all outdoor ranges be fenced with signs posted. It calls for a landscaping plan to aid in noise suppression. And there are minimum distances from the, in the direction of firing to property lines and existing dwellings. So the, you'll see in the site plans, the direction of fire is to the north. We believe, staff believes that they meet the setback distance to the property line and to adjacent residential properties to the north. However, if you go to the northeast, there is a house that's about 2,400 feet from the, the ranges, and there's another house that's roughly 2,700, 2,800 feet to the northeast of the firing range. And I, I think that'll show, it's not a very good picture, but we could bring up an aerial if the, if the commission chose to. So staff, again, kind of similar with the first, first case, is recommending with the large amount of public input, a large amount of information in that staff report, recommending this case be continued to the August meeting. However, if the Planning and Zoning Commission votes to approve, staff is recommending that you include the 12 conditions. Couple of those highlights is a timeframe for the conditional use permit, those hours of operation that we discussed, and then with any CUP, there's a condition that it could be revoked based on validated public complaints. Now, there was a lot more in that staff report that's a very brief summary. I would be happy to answer any questions the board members have. Obviously, the sheriff's department is present, and I think there's quite a few folks that want to make comments on this case as well.
All right. Thank you, Kip. Do any of the board members have questions for staff? Yes, sir.
I do have one. Is there going to be any kind of, and I, I think I know the answer, but I just want to ask, is there going to be any kind of a berm or any other kind of a, of a barrier in the direction of fire?
Uh, ye, yes, that will be included in the plan and the sheriff's department can provide additional information on that.
I was thinking there would, but I just wanted to bring it up.
And Chairman, there was some additional information, I believe, submitted for this case after the report as well. So I think Cheryl will come out and bring some additional information. It'll be Exhibit B for this case.
All right. No questions from the board members for staff? If the applicant would like to step up to the podium, state your name and address.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Will Aiken. I'm the sheriff of Clay County, and I'm the one who's responsible for putting this before you and the people today. I recognize the time and I respect your time, the audience's time, and especially those who have some comments to speak on, on this issue tonight. So I'll make my comments real brief, but what I would like to do is start off by giving you a little bit of history of the sheriff's office and our challenges of finding a, a training site that would also house a shooting range on it. For the, right now, we currently don't have one. We have to go all the way forward north as St. Joe, Clinton County, Parma Woods, and other places to try to find a place to do the training that is expected of us to maintain the CEUs that's mandated by state. We're making it happen, but it's quite the struggle. Sometimes we have to say, schedule out for a year in advance to try to get some kind of range time in order to meet the CEU requirements mandated by state. We don't have a range right now. In the last 24 years, we've made five attempts to try to find the most ideal location, but as you can imagine, it's always met with opposition. And here we are again. This site in particular has natural landscape that helps with safety and security of everyone around, to include those who are training on this facility. And we are, to Commissioner Nolte's question, going to be building additional berms within the property that you see up on the, on the screen right now. I've already admitted, especially to the news crews, that if I was in their shoes, I would oppose this as well. I've actually found myself personally in a situation where I had to oppose a project that neared my property. I get it. But as the elected sheriff of Clay County, it's still my responsibility to create or build a site like this so I can train those who serve Clay County. And it's not just the unincorporated area. You see time and time again on social media, on TV, the struggles of trying to find personnel to work in law enforcement. If we can't train the ones that we have and we're just out there making the bare minimums, you know, meeting the bare minimum standards that's set for us by the state, never mind public opinion, then that's where we're going to be operating at. And so I ask, you know, th, this site, out of all sites that have been given to me, that we've looked at over the last 24 years, this one's the best. I know there are people here who have comments because they live in those areas, and like I said, I get it. I would love to find another location that we were met with no opposition. I'm all ears for that site. With that, I would be happy to answer any of your questions, and if you don't have any questions, I will make myself available to answer any questions if the commission feels that it's appropriate for me to answer as the citizens come up.
Okay. Do any of the board members have questions for?
I got a question for the sheriff.
Yes.
Smithville Lake, you got trap shooting range up there. County controls thousands of acres. Infrastructure would already been in place as far as parking and stuff like that. Why is that not a suitable?
I'm glad you brought that up. That was actually our first site in 1999.
Okay.
Opposition was made and political pressures happened, and that site, that potential site was ultimately shut down. And so, yes, we still have it out there, but think about how much growth Smithville has had in the last 24 years. We had opposition back then. We are most certainly going to have opposition today. And if that is still a potential site, like I said, I'm all ears.
But the trap shooting range still is active, isn't it?
It is. Yes.
That was my curiosity of why that wasn't the number one spot.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's kind of out there in the distance. We still have an, our eye on it. I mean, you know, I would love to see this pass, but in the event that it doesn't, if that's still a potential site, we'll review that site. But like I said, you know, 24 years of growth in Smithville, I'm pretty sure we're going to have a lot more opposition because of what is required of us today and training. And I'll say also, you know, we're, we're focusing on the shooting range of this, and we're not really talking about the bill, the building itself, okay? It's expensive to buy ammunition when you can find it. So being able to fire rounds, you know, 100 people every day, seven days a week and all the misinformation that's, that's floating around out there is simply not the case. The reality is, we would use that range for training on top of the, the minimum training that we have, but the emphasis is going to be placed on the inside of the building. Classroom training, defensive tactics, 30 by 30 room to do virtual reality training where we can do scenario-based exercises when we're dealing with people who have, or who are experiencing mental health crisis. We can't do that on the range. And so we're looking at technology that can aid us in bettering ourselves without having to expend taxpayer dollars to find and purchase exceptionally high ammunition and burn through it at the rates that I think everyone kind of envisions. That's simply not the case. Remember, keep in mind, we are only required by the state to have two hours a year of firearms training. Right now, we barely get that.
I have a question for you, Mr. Aiken. In your business plan, you indicate that you would hire six full-time employees. So simple math would tell me that the facility, the lurk would be open for business approximately 60 hours a week. Is that a fair assumption?
So the six personnel that we proposed, those individuals will act as range safety officers. So whoever operates on the range, they must have a range safety officer. That is something that we did in the military, and that's something that I want to bring here because ultimately, it's safety and security to the people who are training and the neighbors, right? We don't want any mishaps to happen. So if we're using different parts of the range or the classroom, we have to have someone there acting as a safety officer just to make sure that everything is, is going well.
So what would you estimate that would be classroom time, a percentage of classroom time versus a percentage of shooting range time?
Pure speculation, but I would say, you know, classroom time compared to the, the time spent on the range, maybe 60 to 70%. We're, we're also, I mean, keep in mind, it's not just shooting. We have to learn implicit bias. We have to know defensive tactics. We need to know de, de-escalation techniques, things that are required, you know, by the state for us to know, and that's where we would get our training at, so.
So be 70% classroom, 30% more physical activity?
Outside of the classroom, yes.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. Do any of the board members have questions?
Yeah, so my feelings were the same when I was reading through the business plan. It sounded like a, a bigger operation than just training Clay County sheriffs. How many officers do you have to train a year?
So we have approximately 140 to 150 sworn employees. But the reason why this facility is, is a site being eyed by other agencies is because law enforcement agencies across the board are experiencing hardship trying to find a location to train. But it's not just the location to train. It's how many instructors do they have that they can spare for overtime and, you know, to train their people? So law enforcement agencies around the area have already expressed interest in our facility and have asked us, would you be willing to train our people too? Now, we're not going above and beyond. The regular, you know, training for those agencies will be the minimum standard. And if they do want more training, then they would have to, you know, get scheduled in with other classes that we would, that we would schedule.
So you will open to outside agencies?
Yes. This would be a multi-partnership with other law enforcement agencies.
Thanks.
I have a quick question. One of the objections that was raised in the material that we have is the, whether or not the Missouri Department of Natural Resources would allow building or land disturbance on the site. Can you address that a little bit?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the last part. You said?
The land disturbance or construction on site from Missouri Department of Natural Resources is, can you, that was one of the concerns that was raised. Can you address that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm still missing that key part. The, the complaints are about what from DNR?
Land disturbance.
Oh, land disturbance. I was hearing landing strips. I was like, oh, my gosh. Yeah, because I've heard that, you know, people think that we're going to be landing helicopters and airplanes and stuff. That is not the case. We are not putting that out there.
Land disturbance and construction on site.
Yes, thank you for the clarification. Disturbing the site, so that site, there's not a whole lot of land to disturb before it hits bedrock. We have, actually working with Representative Ritchie and Missouri DNR, we were able to get all the reports of all the monitoring that they've been doing since 1984. And so even if we move dirt, which they have done for years in that location, it's going to be there, but there's nothing, there are no indicators, there are no, no concerns about moving dirt as far as the Missouri DNR. Not to mention, there are actually two testing sites on the 22 acres that we're actually going to occupy of the 63 acres. Those are to remain undisturbed because those are used to test groundwater twice a year, I believe. And so we, we can't touch it. I mean, even if everything is growing up in there, we are still not going to mow that. That is the land owner's responsibility and working with Missouri DNR. But as far as disturbing the land or the dirt, there, there's, there's no toxic waste there, there's no concerns, and, you know, I, I can forward all the information that I have from Missouri DNR for the, the commission review if, if you don't already have it.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you, Will.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. We'd like to open it up to a public comment, but I'd like to have a little housekeeping rules here. Any public comment that's not relevant to the CUP application, including prior actions but taken by the county commission, Clay County Sheriff's Office or BFI Waste Systems will not be considered. If any comments stray from the items to be addressed and set forth in the LDC, which is the county's land development code, we will unfortunately have to interrupt the speaker. If, if an inappropriate or irrelevant comments persist, we will have to consider limiting a speaker's time or ending their turn for comments. So with that said, I would open up public discussion. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to comment that, that supports the application being heard. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that opposes the application being heard? I think we've got a room full, and, and if you can keep it to the point, we'd appreciate it.
I'll try to make it brief.
Yes, sir.
My, my name's Dave Langston. I live over in Liberty by the hospital in 1920 Carter Court. I lease the land that is attached to that, to the east. I've got concerns, knowing a little bit about shooting range, a company I used to work for, we built them for the US Marshal Service. But that's at a high elevation. And on any shooting range, you have unintended discharges, misfires, or they misjudge the elevation and shoot over the berm. And anybody that's been around shooting ranges knows that happened. How often it happens is the question. Well, you got a school down there at Missouri City. It's within the two to five mile range. If they shoot centerfire rifles, you're talking about a bullet that travels two to five miles. You got a big cattle ranch to the north that could dramatically affect that. At Parma Woods, that shooting range is shot into the old landfill. You know, the direction of the bullets travel into the old, old landfill, so it's not a concern. Good shooting range. Bullets go into the landfill, never an issue. Here, it sets on a high elevation, those bullets can travel. Big concern of mine. So I'm asking that it be denied and that you consider a better use. They need to build that indoor facility on that land and use it for that purpose. And on the outdoor portion, move that to a lower elevation, like the Old Cooley Lake area in the river bottoms. So those bullets would travel at water level, at river level, and it wouldn't represent a danger to the community. And North Kansas City Police have a shooting range down there just behind the casino. And I understand there's a lot of land around that, but I would And I understand there's a lot of land around that, but I would think they could inquire with them and maybe partner with them to do some of their shooting down there. I don't think they fully utilize that in North Kansas City, so I think it's worth looking at. So I'd ask you to turn it down as it's presented. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to comment? Yes, sir.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Ron Anzalone. I live at 22201 County Road H in Liberty, Missouri, so one of your constituents. You know, for over 25 years, I've worked in the IT industry, eight years of that in the military. My bad. Sorry. So eight years of that, you know, serving my country. That being said, you know, in the course of serving these people, my country, and my industry, I like, I came across an adage by Teddy Roosevelt. Teddy Roosevelt says, "People don't care how much you know until they know how much you care." And when I started thinking about that, I wanted to kind of apply that to this discussion here a little bit. That being said, sitting with sheriff, talked about perception. Perception is reality, right? So when I look at this plan, when I look at this lease, when I look at all of this, I wonder how much you care. I mean, do you care about the citizens of Clay County to the extent that the indemnity clause is now on the backs and the back pocket of the people that are here? Do you care about our first responders being exposed to potential carcinogens and toxins because of the site of where it's at? You know, and then do I, do you care about history? I mean, you all know, you know, we all saw the horror of Three Mile Island, PG&E. We all know about seepage. We all know about that things come over. What about the 9/11 responders and healthcare? Jon Stewart sitting on the Hill in front of the Senate, you know, his famous quote is, "They did their job, you do yours." I think about our first responders. I think about the general construction. I think about the soil that is going to be disturbed. Was there any, was there any testing done on that site? Sure, I'd love to see the DNR results for that site. I would love to, but the previous tenant had to go ahead and sell his house for $10 because of his family just being riddled with the carcinogens. So again, I'm a huge proponent of our first responders. I love my first responders. I served with them, so I care about them. And it's more about them, and it's more about the people here and their livelihood because of that indemnity clause. That's on our back and our responsibility because of how the lease was written. And that's where I get a little bit perturbed, a little disturbed in regards to that because that to me is taking advantage of the people, the consent of the governed. I don't consent to this. That being said, I'm just going to close with that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Yep. Mr. Chairman, could people talk a little bit more directly in the mic so we could hear them more clearly?
Good evening.
Yes.
I'm Tammy Anzalone. I live at 22201 H Highway, and my property is 1.2 miles from the proposed shooting range, and I strongly urge the commission to vote against this project. I want to start off by saying that I am a gun owner, and I am an avid supporter of our first responders. I believe that the sheriff's department deserves to have a state-of-the-art shooting and training facility. However, it should not be obtained by infringing on the rights of rural Clay County citizens. I have several points of contention regarding how this request does not meet our Clay County land use planning tiers. The first being that the proposed location is within rural low-density tier, where the primary use is defined as agricultural crop land, livestock grazing, woodlands, grasslands, and rural residences. A shooting range does not fit within this tier by any stretch of the imagination. Next, I do not believe that this request meets several of the approval criteria for a conditional use permit. First, it does not comply with the land development code, as I previously stated. Second, it will have a substantial adverse impact on the public health, safety, and welfare by means of stray bullets, straying into neighboring properties, impacting local livestock due to the heightened noise and bullet safety, and most importantly, the jeopardy we are placing our first responders in by utilizing a prior waste management site. We all deserve better than this. It will cause substantial injury to the value of other properties in the vicinity. I've not seen anything submitted by the applicant to state otherwise. In other instances where folks are moving near a shooting range, the shooting range is already in place. They're making the decision, they're choosing to buy a property and to live near that range. I did not make that choice. And finally, this proposed use is not compatible with adjacent usage. A shooting range is going to generate a significant noise level compared to the usual noise level from farms and ranches. Simple search online, I found data by Dr. Kramer, a PhD at Ball State University, who advises that on average, a 9-millimeter gunshot is 159 decibels compared to cattle that generate an average of 52 to 79 decibels. When I moved to rural Clay County in 2009, I fully expected to see, hear, and smell the local cattle. I did not expect to see, hear, and smell the impacts of an outdoor shooting range. And when the three-story shooting tower is erected on an already high-altitude location, the noise is only going to get worse. Based on the above points alone, this request does not meet the criteria to approve. The lure of taxpayer money from the American Rescue Plan Fund obtained by the Clay County Sheriff's Office should not change the fact that the proposed building site does not meet the requirements of CUP or land development code. And regarding the funds, for those of you who may not have reviewed the usage of funds for Clay County from the American Rescue Relief Fund of the 20-
I think we're getting a little off-topic here. We're talking about the conditional use permit and the conditions.
Okay, we're not going to have comments from the pub. You have a chance to come to the podium, and the Planning and Zoning Commission is here to hear those criteria. The funding is not one of those criteria, but very good points, otherwise.
Again, I would like to just respond then to something that the sheriff said. So in the sheriff's argument, he said that, or in his statements regarding his project, that he considers having to drive to ranges that are a distance away, such as Smithville, Parkville, and St. Joseph, to be disruptive. It takes time to arrange. I would just ask, what about the disruption to my life and those that live nearby that are going to happen as a result of this range? I then heard that the statement that 60 to 70% of the usage of this facility will be classroom, as opposed to 30% being in the outdoor range. If that's the case, it begs the question, then why do you need a 60-acre facility? Why is the driving point to be, to obtain this outdoor shooting facility if it's only to be used 30% of the time? Can't you forecast ahead and procure these existing shooting ranges for that minimal 30% of training time? Finally, I just have one last point to make, and I'll concede the microphone. It is very important that we take action now to prevent this from happening at this location because once it's built, the Missouri state law prohibits lawsuits accusing gun ranges from nuisance and trespassing and gives gun ranges civil and criminal immunity from noise complaints. So I'm not saying don't build it. I'm just saying build it in a zone where it belongs or use the funds to expand existing training facilities. I thank you for your time.
All right, thank you.
Hey, Chairman, I might suggest putting up the six criteria that we have to consider so that applicant, or when they're speaking, they can kind of see the things that we have to consider.
Okay. So anyone else that would like to comment on oppose the case being heard?
Yes, sir. My name is John Chick.
Well, you can keep it brief and to the point, that'd be good, John.
I reside at 9520 Cameron Road. I've owned that property for approximately 50 years. My wife and I have lived there 35 years. The applicant, excuse me, the business plan is responding to your shooting range requirements, which says, among other things, state the type of weapons and the type of ammunition to be used. If you look at the business plan, it says the following things will be used, including but not limited to, and then lists different types of handguns, long guns, whatever. So in essence, their business plan is not telling you the types of weapons that are going to be used. Number two, you have in their business plan, every type of ammunition they've listed is lead-based. There's a reason why, as a member of Ducks Unlimited, I don't use anything but steel shot. Lead is a forever mineral. It's going to get in your body, it'll never leave. If you want to have this lease run for the decades that it's set for, you're going to have all this outdoor lead acquiring itself in the people. Number two, the Cell Tower people and the Turtle Ranch people had some folks with a lot of oomph talking about real estate values. I don't remember anybody coming up after Sheriff Aiken saying, "Oh, this isn't going to damage your property." Don't see anything in their business plan that says, "Won't damage your property." That's right in that format. When you have, and I will say as a landowner, Mr. Rothman will agree, that a landowner, an owner of property can be their own real estate expert and is an approved, accepted testimony. This is an adverse, detrimental, terribly suppressing cost to the property, to the two properties I own. You have an indemnification agreement that the lease talks about. That is something that says, whatever judgment, whatever is decided anywhere that Brownie Ferris Industries owes anybody for anything, noise, chemicals, poisoning, accidental shootings, anything, Brownie Ferris isn't going to pay a penny. You all are going to agree that the Clay County residents pay it. And what you're doing is you are paying a private debt with public money, and you can't do that.
Thank you. Yep, thank you. Anyone else that would like to comment? Yes, sir.
Yeah, hi, my name is William Wayne. I live at 1916 Carter Court, Liberty, Missouri. And I submitted this via email, but I'd like to read it to you. My name is William E. Wayne. My wife Susan and I own 45 acres located behind 9126 and 9200 Cameron Road, Excelsior Springs, Missouri. We've owned this property since 2014 and enjoy its wildlife and recreational opportunities. We have lived at 1916 Carter Court, Liberty, Missouri since 2004. Our concerns about the proposed shooting range are primarily as follows. Number one, and most important, is the possibility of injury, death to ourselves, our family, any guests that we might have at our land from bullets leaving the ranges. Number two would be damage to our physical assets, which would be buildings, vehicles, any equipment that we have on our land. Number three would be declining wildlife due to range activities, bullets, noise, activity at the range site. And that's important to us. That's one reason we got the land was for enjoy the wildlife. Number four, very hard for me to put a value on it, but is property value depreciation. I don't think having a active law enforcement outdoor shooting range in my backyard is going to do much for the property value. We have serious concerns about the chosen site. Building a shooting range on an elevated location, which is top of a hill, increases the likelihood of bullets leaving the range. A major rule of firearm safety, and there are several, but a major rule is, quote, "Always be sure of your target and what's beyond it," unquote. Our property is beyond the proposed outdoor ranges and becomes an impact zone for bullets leaving the ranges. We are directly downrange. Do not build a shooting range on the 8801 Still House Road site. Don't disturb the BFI cap Missouri City landfill site. It is not an ideal location. There are existing ranges within 20 miles of Liberty, Liberty, Missouri that can be utilized for law enforcement training and are used for law enforcement training. Perhaps better scheduling is what is needed. Using existing facilities with proven use and safety history result in much less initial cost, less maintenance, less personnel cost, and much less risk to tax-paying Clay County residents, which I am, my wife is. We are asking you to not proceed with the 8801 Still House Road shooting range construction project, so I ask the board members to vote no on the conditional use permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wayne. Is there anyone else that would like to comment that opposes the application? We've got a woman coming up, sir, just hang tight. Nope, no, come on up. Yep. You speak here to the microphone, name and address.
Good evening. My name's April Strano, and I am probably one of the newest residents there. We bought 9005 Still House on May 4th of this year. So property value, yeah, I wouldn't have bought that house knowing this. I just don't think anybody knew. It's a big deal. Mental health-wise, I'm nervous about it today, right now. I'm not a gun person. My husband is, I'm not. I don't want it there. I know our dog will be upset, and I want to tell you one of the things that I love the most about that house, and I didn't know I would love it. In the morning and the evening, I can hear the cows. I think that's the coolest thing ever. But I don't know I'm going to be able to hear them with guns going off. And maybe it won't be all the time, but it will be enough. And I've served nine years in the Navy, and I was a dispatcher. So I do support the police. I support their plan. I just don't want it there. So I just would like for you to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, April. I think we had a gentleman in the back, green shirt, please.
Yes, I'm Guy Sneed. We own a property that joins east of what they're calling Spence Acres. We've lived there 32 years. My wife and family has owned it for over 60. Very concerned we raise cattle. We're talking shooting possibly 13 hours a day. 13 hours of gunfire. Do you have a clue what kind of stress this is going to put on these cattle? And when they go through the fences to get out, Sheriff Aiken's is not going to come and rebuild my fence. He's going to come and say, "You need to keep your cattle off the roads." I've had it already happen before. There's a possibility when these cows are under this much stress, they will not breed back. Who will compensate us for our loss of income? I'm for sure the county's not going to. The lead poisoning, probably a minimum concern, but the Spence Acres drains directly into my property into a creek. Spence has filed a lawsuit for health reasons, contamination from the dump site, which is just to the south of this proposed area. BFI is going to tell you when they drop the suit. When you pay somebody enough, sure, they're going to drop the suit. I know all of this because Spence's lawyers come and talked to me twice about joining the lawsuit because of the drainage coming onto my property. I would not do it. I told them if I was going to file a lawsuit, I would do it on my own. And now you're talking about spending multimillion dollars on a facility for people to come in on a property that had this kind of lawsuit on it. Plus, they don't- Plus, they don't care that it's contaminated, and now you're going to put people in. I have called in years where we're in a drought condition, not enough grass, they bail the hay off of it. I have called their office, will you lease me some of the pasture? Will you sell me some of the hay? No. No animal can be on this property that could be consumed by union, humans. But yet we can let humans in on this property for a shooting facility, and you're going to spend this kind of money as a county for something that you may have to abandon and leave? Doesn't make good sense. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Neil and Kristy Wilkerson, if she'll stand up here, 8913 Still House Road. I've got a map that I'd like to show you that kind of goes on, that goes a little bit further what he just, he just talked about. And this is, this is information that we can get as a citizen that shows, he's talking about this farm right here. Okay? This is from the Missouri Department of Natural Resources. They have labeled this as a, and if I put my glasses on, I can read it, as a active and use limited area. This is this whole area. This is where the dump site is. This is where the contamination is being cleaned up currently because they couldn't contain it. BFI said they couldn't contain our contamination. We were tired of hauling it out at midnight to St. Louis and possibly have an accident and what that's going to look like. So what we're going to do is we're going to put these metal containers here, and it's going to, it's going to somehow magically filter this, this oozing of this toxic, toxins that are, that are oozing out of the ground. And oh, by the way, that's going to run off into the, into the creek. This is from them, and that, that goes down to Missouri City. So that is concerning to me. That is one of the many things that is concerning to me. This is where the opposed shooting range is at, and if you look at it, it's sitting right here on this, on this pond. Okay? Now, on this pond, they keep talking about, well, there's test wells. Yes, there is. I've got a map of that. And what happens to be right here by the pond? Well, you can't tell me you're not going to disturb this ground and not disturb what the sheriff just said can't be done. I don't see it. I don't see it at all. Again, this is the Spence family. Spence family got bought out. There's been five farms in the area that BFI has decided to buy and on record has paid $10 for with an undisclosed amount of money to surround this whole area in the last five years. Why is that? That's concerning to me. I don't want my law enforcement officers crawling on the ground. I don't want construction workers working on it, and I damn sure don't want it to get airborne and all these people here get affected by it. That's serious, guys.
What cannot be done in that area?
Nothing. It's restricted. It cannot, this ground cannot be touched. It is zoned from DNR that it cannot be touched or disturbed.
This was just taken off our website today. So this is out there, and so my concern is, is that if we can get this as citizens, remember we didn't go all the way to look at planning and zoning and what meetings were coming up, but us as citizens can look at this and find this, why has this been addressed by people bringing, you know, the proposal into the shooting range in this area? This is easy for us to find, so I don't either, I know if you knew it or surprised, consider.
Do you want to?
Peter One is not acceptable, and I have been.
You have to leave it.
All right, then leave it with staff, and he'll make it part, he'll mark it as an exhibit, and it'll get made part of the record.
Basically, we cannot do any type of digging on this land. That is part of what is, it means to be a hazardous dump site area, cannot dig. I don't know how we're going to produce this shooting range without somehow digging in the area as well. So.
You can.
So we'll, we'll attach this part of the official record as Exhibit C.
Okay.
Those stipulations I have here on my phone, and it says no drilling, use of groundwater, no disturbing of soil, construction restrict, inspected maintenance, hazardous substance remaining. It's right here on the website, guys. It's right here. Why do we want that airborne? Why do we want to hold Clay County accountable for the liability? Because they've signed a 30-year contract with BFI that keeps them not responsible or liable for anything for $1,000. Now, that's a head scratcher. Yeah, it's a good deal. Heck, yeah, from the surface, it looks great. But when you dive into it and you see what ground they're trying to move, it's not. It's absolutely not acceptable. And this is, this is not a phase one. This is, he's got, there's two phases that they want to do with this, with the towers and building out. But 60, six zero outdoor shooting ranges, 60. Everybody in this room's going to have to hear that all night long. That could go on for, basically, they left themselves open to go, we can shoot whenever we want. That's pretty much what it says, and that's what, kind of what I expect. And I expect to hear flash bombs and, 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 and all that, because that's part of their, their training. I've been on the FBI training out in Leavenworth on their grounds. I know what that's like. No one's mentioned about that over there, over there in Kansas. Personally have been there. So that's concerning. My wife would like to speak about her experience and what she knows to move forward with our pet animals.
So we love it where we live at, at Still House Road. It's quiet, that's why we moved there. There definitely, we would not be buying a house out there at this point. We're trying to do work on our house right now. We're investing more in our property, and to have the noise that's going to be affecting everybody, that affects my quality of life. I'm also a veterinarian, though. I went through two weeks prior to the Fourth of July, writing nothing but medication scripts for our pets because of all the fireworks. This in our area, I mean, a lot of us have pets, you know, dogs, cats, cows, and we are going to put them under so much mental stress, which is not only going to disrupt their lives, but us as their owners, it's definitely going to take away the quality of our lives. So this, this is not the place where the shooting range needs to go.
All right.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Wilkerson. Speak up into the microphone.
My name is Kathy Rule. We are at 9402 Cameron Road, Excelsior Springs. My husband and I, and I hope I don't repeat, which I probably will, a lot of what has already currently been said, but my husband and I own Shoal Creek Land and Cattle, which we are pretty much north and east of said property. I had to write down some of the things I want to say because I'm a very emotional person, and I apologize ahead of time. We've been out at this property, we bought it over 20 years ago. We have 350 acres and raise purebred cattle, Sematol and Red Angus. Along with working, our ranch has been our refuge to come home to, a peaceful, wonderful place to raise our cattle and listen to the birds and enjoy our everyday life. Bringing my family, my grandchildren to our ranch to ride ATVs, go swimming, and enjoy country life is one of my greatest pleasures. If this should happen to go through, it is going to sound like a war zone. I don't know if people complain about fireworks all day, at night, their kids and themselves, they can't sleep, their animals are traumatized. Well, this only lasts maybe a couple of days during the year. We're talking every single day that we are going to have to endure this. This leads me to another concern, and this has been brought up, and that's about our What is the impact on them going to be? We raise purebred animals. Not that they are any less important than just your usual cattle, but they are going to lose weight, they may be stressed, because the stress level, according to my veterinarian that I talked to, the stress level on the animals is the same as on human beings. And them hearing this gunfire going off continually from 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM, and not just for a few days in July, would anybody here want to hear fireworks going off outside of your house, day in and day out? Only this is gunfire, and it's not just fireworks. I haven't even touched, as other people have, on our property valuation. We have 350 acres. We've spent a lot of money out there. We've put a lot of money into our home to make it our place that we plan on staying for the rest of our lives, and hopefully maybe our children will even take it on. But who in the world is going to want to? If they're going to hear gunfire going every day and night, how are we ever going to be able to sell? Not that I want to sell. I don't want to leave that place. That's my home. I for one, wouldn't buy a home in an area that has a gun range. We were there first. We all came there before any gun was ever even talked about for the serenity and the peace out there. This will all be destroyed if this is allowed to go through. Not only our mental health, which you can probably tell, is causing me a lot of stress that my husband and my family can tell you. I've never in my life faced anything like this that is not going to end the rest of my life that I am going to be spending on that ranch. And why is that fair when there are other locations that they can go out and find and not in our backyard? I think Sheriff Aiken said, you know, that he wouldn't be in favor of this. No, nor would anybody else in their right mind. But so many are okay as long as it's not in their backyard. This is my backyard. This is their backyard, and this just cannot go through. Okay, I'm trying to close, I'm sorry. We don't have the option, as I said, of picking up and moving, nor should we have to, but I can't think of anything worse to disturb our everyday lives. I do understand the need to train the officers and how important that is, but do they understand how important our mental health and our peace that we all moved out here for and how that is? Does anybody truly care? All of us were here first. A lot of people are fine with things, like I said, unless it's in their backyard. But guess what? Most of us work our whole lives to look forward to retirement. I can only hope and pray, and everyone else concerned will not have theirs turned upside down for the passing of this. And who's going to be able to guarantee me that none of these bullets are going to be able to reach our property or one of our cattle or our help that are out there checking these cattle, mowing pastures, putting up hay? Are there other more logical secluded areas for this? Well, that's not for me to answer. That's for the sheriff and the sheriff's department. But what's the impact, or what will the contaminated soil, we've been through all of that, but what is the best use of this secluded, this land, I'm sorry? What's the impact to the property values? What will the potential noise impact be? Will there be lead pollution? Will the contaminated soil be disturbed? These are just some of the concerns raised in regards to this gun range. Before I close, I had every intention, and I don't even know that I can even do it, but let me just see here for one second, if you would just bear with me one minute. I'd just like to play this if it will come across, and it's very short. I'm not sure. My question, how many of you would want to hear this every day of your lives, day in and day out? I am begging you to not put this through and hear our voices and our concerns. Please find a different piece of land, somewhere that will not impact so many residents that have moved here for the peaceful existence that we currently enjoy. Thank you for putting up with me.
So anyone else like to comment? If you, if you have something new to say, we're kind of getting some repeat topics here, so.
My name is Ken Bowen. I live at 23407 Northeast 100th Street. Lucky for you, most of everything I was planning on saying has already been said. But having said that, what I want to do a little bit, if you bear with me, it's hot, we're tired, it's been a long day, and I can't top what you just heard. But I do want to say a few things. One, a little bit off topic, I can't hear worth a darn. And so I don't know how to express to you how frustrating it is to sit in this room and not be able to hear folks. So I don't know the ground rules too well. I kind of got a sense of them, but I couldn't hear the sheriff very well, and I can't hear this side of the room. So just a suggestion, in future meetings, if you can get closer to the microphone or something for some of us that can't hear, I appreciate it. What I want to do a little bit is look at some written criteria and written documents, starting with the one that's up on the board, and particularly Provision A. It talks about the criteria for approval, and it states pretty clearly that the use has to comply with the intent of the Comprehensive Plan and the general provisions of the Land Development Code. More importantly, modified for the specific use request. I'm going to get into that as to what that should mean. But the Comprehensive Plan is very clear that the basis for decision-making by this body and the next body must recognize the right of citizens to seek to influence planning decisions that affect their well-being. I appreciate the fact that you've hung in here with us. I really do. But I'm troubled a little bit by limiting comments, and I'll just leave it at that and appreciate your tolerance for that. It also says that adequate information has to be provided to individuals far enough in advance of the decision to allow their meaningful participation. I could go through all the stuff I've been through in the last few days trying to figure out how I missed this. And when you go back into the meeting records of the commission, the easiest way to go back is to go to the links on the dates. Well, those links stop in September 2022. So I figured out a way to get to them, but it wasn't easy. But the way I found out about this was because my wife and I, through previous experience, learned that we need to read the legal notices in the Courier Tribune like crazy. And so the way we found out about this was the notice in the Courier Tribune on June And it talks about the operation of a shooting range. Doesn't say indoor, doesn't say outdoor, it says a shooting range. Well, that sure gets my attention. And then it says 8801 Still House Road. That's right down the road from me. So my immediate reaction was, well, shame on me for not knowing. How did I not know? How did I not know that this was going to go on? And so I went back to the July 14th Business Station Meeting, where the lease for this property was on the agenda. The agenda packet for that meeting was 620 pages. God love the commissioners for reading through that. But as a citizen, trying to find out where in the heck this stuff is, I got to scroll through 620 pages to find something. And when you find the agenda, what's it say? The agenda says, "Approve lease agreement BFI Waste Systems of North America/Sheriff." How in the world am I supposed to know that they're going to talk about a shooting range? So when I look at the publications put out by the county, the resolution itself talks about a range. Doesn't say shooting range, doesn't say inside or outside. It says a range. What are you hiding? The request for commission action dated July 1st, 2021 talks about that they want to consider this lease, and it's to include a range for firearms training. Indoor, outdoor, how big? You know, that's the application. So then, what I would like to say is that the public notice sign went up. Well, we've got the property owner letters go out. They're dated June 23rd. Friday, they go out. I think the previous testimony was 11. I thought there were 12. But three of those letters went to Browning Ferris Industries of North America, Browning Ferris Industries, and the Missouri City Landfill LLC, address a P.O. box in Phoenix. And so I went driving around because I couldn't figure out where these people are. And I couldn't figure out why some of these addresses didn't seem to get letters, and they seemed pretty close to where it was. And so the public notice sign goes up on 8805 Stillhouse. The lease is for 8801 Stillhouse. What's 8805 Stillhouse? That's the driveway into Spence Acres. And if you look at the plan, the driveway into this property is 8805. So everybody that's going in there is going in over Spence Acres to access this site. Well, you've heard about Spence Acres. I don't need to tell you more. So the lease that was signed that night, July 14th, 2021, two years ago, says that promptly following the effective date, Clay County shall undertake an outreach effort to owners and occupants of real property in reasonable proximity to the leased property. I don't think anybody here got anything. You know? The lease that was signed said you had to do something to tell us, and it didn't happen. And now we've got six business days to put something together of half intelligence to present to you. Why is it six days? Fourth of July holiday and a weekend. Good Lord. I went to all kinds of county offices yesterday, wound up being referred to the mapping office because I wanted to see where these properties were that BFI was purchasing. I found out where the mapping office was, and it was closed. This feels like the ball has been hidden. I don't want to make accusations. I'm just telling you how I feel. And when I look at the lease, Section 7.13 says Clay County is not to record the lease or amend memorandum thereof in the real property records of the county without the prior written consent of BFI in its sole discretion. When does a public entity have to bow down to a corporation in its responsibility to notify its citizens? You know, I don't know the legalities of whether you have to file a lease or not. But it indicates that it could be filed. And it also says you're not supposed to unless you get it cleared from us. So we've talked about the future land use tiers. But I want to talk about that portion that says modified for the specific use request. That's a lot of power given to the Planning and Zoning Committee, Commission, and the Clay County Commissioners. So I think we're all familiar with the student loan case that was decided by the Supreme Court. And you're going to say, what's that got to do with this? Well, it's got everything to do with it because the pivotal issue in that case was focused on the extent of a congressional delegation of authority to an executive agency to modify the terms of the student loan statute. Well, here I've got a congressional delegation to executive bodies, the ordinance telling you guys, you can modify this plan. And so what does Justice Roberts say about this in the majority opinion? He says that the Secretary of Education's power under the Act to modify does not permit basic and fundamental changes in the scheme designed by Congress. He explained, "Modify carries a connotation of increment or limitation and must be read to mean to change moderately or in minor fashion." That is how the word is ordinarily used and defined, and the legal definition is no different. So that power of your bodies to modify is pretty limited. You can't change the scheme of this. You can't swallow up the rules that are up there. You can't swallow up the Land Development Code. You can't swallow up the Comprehensive Plan. I don't see how the proposed use can be seen as incremental or minor. It does fundamentally change the low-density tiers, contemplation of intent and primary use and non-residential use. Outdoor shooting ranges with 60 shooting stations for weapons with a decibel power, as will be used here. It's got, this place has got an armory. $60,000 is budgeted for the first year to buy ammunition. And it's true, ammunition's expensive. But that's a lot of ammo. Is there going to be put in this armory? And we're talking about the operation of an 8,000-square-foot building for education and training and housing, six full-time employees. I don't see how any of this fits within this code. Not even close. And this is not a proposal for a golf course, right? That's pretty close to agricultural use. I mean, the tiers tell you agricultural use or service-related use or recreation. That's what the code tells you. You got to be guided by. You got to modify within that concept. So this isn't a golf course. It's not a riding stable, you know? It's not a working farm bed and breakfast. It's not even close.
We've got still a room full of people. And I hear what you're saying.
I'm almost done.
Very well.
I'm almost done. But I have that right. According to this plan, the intent of this plan says you have to listen.
I'm listening.
All right, I know you are, and I appreciate it. But this isn't recreational. This is dead serious law enforcement training with high caliber weapons at all hours. And this doesn't even count Phase Two. Good Lord. So I'm not going to talk about a lot of this stuff. So but there are questions to be begged. If you've got land all around that's subject to environmental covenants and restrictions, why are we sitting here thinking that this pure parts full of land is immune from that? It makes no sense. Spence Acres had problems. Were they true? I don't know. They got bought out. Go south, you got all kinds of problems. It says a Class II, Class II hazardous waste site on the registry of the state of Missouri. What's a Class II waste site? It says that it proposes a substantial risk to health and the environment, and actions required. This is nothing to play around with. You've got toxins in the soil. That's part of requirements to be a Class II. Bear with me. Then we've talked a little bit about the indemnification provisions. I urge you, with everything I've got, to go read that lease. Some of you have expertise in this area way beyond what I've got. But you ought to read that lease. Because if you look at Section, for instance, 4.1, it's in cats. It's not an ordinary type. It's in cats, and it's screaming at you that we're buying or we're leasing this land as is and accepting all faults and defects latent and patent. Latent and patent. That means all kinds of stuff. How can you take something like this as is? Says Clay County was given the opportunity to inspect the property. Well, great, what expertise do we have to inspect this property? Did we inspect it? I don't know. Where's the report? We have an expert? The lease that we signed says that the Clay County is going to do an environmental survey plan. Has that been done? When's that going to get done? This is willy-nilly to the nth degree. And when you talk about indemnification, the lease talks about Clay County. That's not who's indemnifying these folks. And when you're indemnifying these folks for remedial procedures? Wow. Where's that money coming from? It's coming from the taxpayers. Where this lease talks about indemnification and payments and no recourse. It's saying taxpayers, you got no say. You're just going to pay. So there's been a lot said about noise. The lease talks about quiet enjoyment and nuisance. Read those provisions. Understand what they mean. The nuisance is coming to us. In the prior years, we went, well, the people came to the nuisance. So they shut that down. Now, if you live south of 100th Street, too bad, we're going to build this nuisance right in your backyard. Speed of sound, 1,100 feet per second. It's going to hit my deck in four seconds. I'm not smart enough to do the calculations on dissipation of decibel sound and all that fancy stuff. But I know it's going to be loud, and it's going to be shocking, and my oldest corgi is going to fall over dead. So the other thing, and I'm going to conclude here. I appreciate your tolerance. I really do. I haven't heard much about fire protection other than putting in hydrants. Well, if you're going to put in hydrants, you're going to have to do some digging. And I don't think you can dig here. And moreover, this is protected by the Fishing River Fire Protection District. You're talking volunteer fire department. And bless them for their service. But are they going to be able to respond to an issue of a hazmat proportion or problems with that ammunition that's stored there? Are we going to send these poor guys into that? Then, the closest, Nick's closest place is Birmingham. Birmingham's volunteer fire department, that's 15 minutes away. The closest professionals are at Kent Street in Liberty. If something goes wrong out here, that's a disaster. And you know what? We're going to have to pay for it. So again, I appreciate your time, your tolerance. You're listening, and I couldn't talk, Kathy Rule. But thank you for your time.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And Chairman, can I just add? If we can refrain from clapping, I think we'll get through a little bit quicker. And just for the public record, the lease does not come in front of this board, nor does this board have any control over the lease. I just want that to be part of the official record.
My name is Amy Kipping. I'm at 9105 Stillhouse Road. I'm going to skip. Don't worry, I won't read all this. Because I bet you guys want to go home, and you probably won't have a shooting range in your backyard. I'd want to go home too, then. It's not safe. It's not okay. There's reasons why there's danger signs all over the fences, but I know you guys don't want to talk about how toxic the land is. There's going to be issues with injury to the value of our properties, which isn't fair. I just bought my first house. One thing that hasn't been touched on is a lot about the wildlife. Like, that's why I live out there. I love watching the wildlife. I don't need gunfire scaring it away all the time. The other issue was light pollution because I'm sure the security will be pretty big with the magnitude of what's being proposed. And there's a lot of people that like to look at the stars at night. So I don't have much else to say, but I am also begging you to not allow this to happen.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Matthew Lor. And I live at 8518 North Richmond Avenue in Kansas City. I'm the executive director of a maternity home that is at 23615 Northeast 100th Street. Okay? And I empathize so much with you, Sheriff Aiken. And I've, I'm an adjunct, or had been an adjunct instructor in Law Enforcement Academy. I'm a licensed psychotherapist. And I operate a maternity home for up to 15 moms and infants. This, that's about a little over a mile, I think, is the crow flies to this property. We have made significant investments into this program. We purchased the program. Well, we had a donor that had purchased it for around $524,000. Today, I'm indemnified. My property value is at 1.4 million. I, you know, I understand fully, having been here, petitioning for this home. And some of the members here that are speaking tonight were opposed to me being there. But what drove me, and some of you voted against me being there or us operating there. And one of the things that always drove me to keep coming back, because we did this for about for about three, four months, was my love for the unborn and for the vulnerable women and children that I work with. Okay? Many of our women struggle with post-traumatic stress disorder. Some come from environments where gunfire, I would hate for them to have to hear. They cower into a corner hearing what Miss Rule played tonight. You know, as far as the sound and the impact of this. Made it very clear from when we acquired this property that we were going to make our land part of the treatment milieu. By that meaning, we planted a 16 garden or a 16 tree orchard. We planted garden beds. We have a walking trail, 14 stations of the cross that, that circle around our property. We have hundreds of high school students and college students that come out and volunteer and work on our property, our clients and children. We have a playground there, you know, play and walk about our facility there. This is a big concern to me and a lot of what, like I said, I understand, but I have to advocate for, for the moms and the people that, that are going to come here and they're not going to speak to you tonight. Okay? But they're citizens too. You know, many of my moms work in this community, hold jobs. We've, we've been able to do some miraculous things. We brought 10 children into the world at our program since we were, since we began operating. But this is something that the scores of volunteers, the youth. I have a, a cross-country team that's coming out two weeks that's going to work on our property and help spread mulch and do groundwork there. We have large church groups that come out and work every Saturday morning out on our property and that, that are out there along with our moms, some of the volunteers, babies that we watch the children while they're in there. I ask that you can, you know, that you consider the conversations that have been said tonight, the fact about the noise that would be happening, the disturbance it would cause to our program specifically. And again, what, what others have talked about in terms of stray bullets or anything like this, or misfires or anything like this that might happen at, that would endanger the hundreds of folks that we have out at our program site and that volunteer and work. And, and I thank you all for your time and I thank you Sheriff for the work that you do. And, and I just appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Does anyone else have like to comment that has something new to add?
I'm Susan Wayne. I live at 1916 Carter Court. My husband, William, and I own the property at 9200 Cameron Road. I think we noted that earlier. I've been very emotional since we did get a letter on the 27th of June with not much notice, as mentioned before. I have been working and upset since this, even coming to this meeting has been, been very traumatic for me. And I know a lot of this has been covered. I've done a lot of computer research on this. I'm not a computer person. I'm older, but I did pick up on one thing that hasn't been mentioned tonight. I found in the records that I feel that you should consider your own Clay County Planning Zoning Department mission. If you don't know your mission, maybe you could refer to it. It said, "To protect and to promote health and safety and general welfare of our citizens." That's your mission. So please refer to it and do that and oppose this. And don't let me be stressed or not be able to sleep. Thank you for letting me talk.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Try and keep brief and, and not repeat what everybody else said. My name is Steve Matthews. I'm a landowner out at 20615 H Highway, which is about two and a half miles from the landfill. Purchased property three years ago, but I've lived in Liberty since 1990. So we're about 2.5 miles from the crow fly, as the crow flies to the land waste site. Did an experiment today with one of my neighbors who went down to the landfill. I'm a gun owner. I'm a supporter of, of our sheriff's office and our police departments. But I took a 40 caliber pistol, which is not super loud, not as loud as a long gun, and shot it off, shot four shots while this neighbor was sitting down there and they could distinctly hear it two and a half miles away. We then did another experiment. She's about a mile to 1.2 miles from the landfill and about 1.2 miles from me. Shot the same weapon distinctly a lot louder. And so, you know, the, the noise pollution is real. The fact that it's going to be seven days a week from 6:00 AM in the business plan, you know, is, is an issue. I'm curious why a public entity like the sheriff's office is developing a business plan and to make a profit and to run a 60 range or 60 gun range. Why are we getting, why is our public entity getting into business? I understand that there's a need, but I think it gives us some exposure. My last thing I want to do is that my property is right across from the old Liberty Golf Course. That is currently being developed with about 22 sites that are all probably going to be $1 million or more dollar houses. How much tax is that going to bring into the county? A lot. We also have the other developments on the side, the existing ones. That area is getting developed. I'm building a new house out there. We're adding a lot to the property taxes. If we put this gun range in that area, you're going to eliminate about probably a three to five mile radius of building. Nobody's going to want to build out there. You're, you're going to deplete your tax base. You have an opportunity. I know we're not having as much building in Liberty as you do to the, to the West, but it's moving out there. It's only a matter of time before more of those developments. There is a new development out there right now. This is not conjecture. This is going to happen. It's going to move that way, but you're going to cut, you know, cut your nose off to spite your face by cutting your tax base by not allowing development to go out there because nobody's going to want to develop out there for, for a long ways. So I appreciate your time. I hope that will give you some consideration to think about. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Stacy Davis. I live at 9119 Stillhouse Road and I live north of the proposed area. And yes, people that I've been listening to, the sound is true, especially around 4th of July for those two days that, yes, I have animals. A lot of people on my road have animals and that, yes, we did have to keep them inside because of the fireworks. And just like that gentleman just said, if I know where he lives on H Highway, yes, there has been new development on H Highway where people are building new homes. Cause I, you know, it's out past Liberty Hills Country Club. And he's right, maybe people would not want to be in that area because of the sound, the lighting. I didn't even think about that. You know, when I look south, it's all dark. A lot of people like to move out into the country because of the darkness. And you can always see the sky and the stars real good. And then the wildlife, some people have also brought up the wildlife. But we also have foxes, deer and opossums. A lot of people don't like those animals, but if you have constant fire and loud noises, maybe those will just eventually go away and the, the cattle too. So I'm just hoping that you really do think hard on your decision for this.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. Yep. Is there anyone else that would like to comment? Yes, sir. If you have something new to offer, it'd be good.
My name's Kenneth McCoy. I live on 8812 Stillhouse Road. I was born and raised at age 726 Stillhouse Road. I've lived there all my life. I do not want to hear this noise pollution the rest of my life. I'd like to know how many is in here that opposes to this. I'd like them to raise up their hands.
All right. Thank you, Kenneth. Is there anyone else that would like to? I think we kind of got the consensus of the room, but yes, sir.
Thank you. I'll be brief. Tim Harnett, I live on 155 Walnut Street. I share several acres with the, the new BFI property that they just acquired just recently. As a veteran and I have a lot of friends that are veterans and they come to my house. Many of them are service-connected, disabled veterans with PTSD. They also have, some are combat vets, some are non-combat, multiple deployments, and they come over to my property because of the solitude, the, the wildlife, just the quietness. And we lose 22 to 24 a day for suicide. And I don't, I'm not saying I save any of them, but at least I'm giving a lot of them a chance for, for a little peace and relaxation. The other thing I wanted to bring up was big blue tanks. Now you're, you're going to, you're wanting to put several firing ranges right next to these big blue tanks. I don't know what's in these tanks. These tanks didn't start coming up out of the ground until after we purchased the property. Now what if an accidental, accidental discharge or a misfire or ricochet or whatever hits the bottom of one of those tanks? And the modern ammunition and firearms nowadays, I'm sure it'll go right through those tanks. And what if it's at the bottom? So it's going to start leaking. How are we going to know it's, it's leaking on the ground? Now we've got another situation again. So, and that's about it. I don't want to beat the dead horse with all the others, other topics, but I want to thank all my neighbors for being here, sheriff and the deputies and stuff, because I'm really proud of my community.
All right. Thank you, Tim. Is there anyone else that would like to comment? I think we pretty well know the gist of the atmosphere in here. Yes, sir.
I'm Patrick Majors, 22213 Northeast 100th Street. Just briefly, there's, as I think about what's been said here this evening, I, I agree with the opposition that's here. I also have some agreement with the sheriff. The thing that concerns me the most is my son's a police officer. He's a marine veteran. I'm a veteran. One of the things that concerns me greatly is that this really feels like betrayal. And I'm concerned about the relationship between law enforcement and citizens. And given the situation that if this should be passed, I think this is an irreparable schism. I don't want that. I want the police and any of those involved in law enforcement, first responders to have really good, good facilities, want them to have really good training. And I think fundamentally, law enforcement deserves a better place than this and we do too.
Thank you. If there's no additional comments, we'd like to go ahead and close the public participation. Yeah, I was getting ready to ask you, Mr. Aiken, if you want to comment or rebuttal any of the other discussions.
First, this is the first time I've ever attended a planning and zoning commission meeting and I have a newfound appreciation and respect for the decisions that you have to make. Secondly, I don't know what meets the criteria of a compelling argument, but I sure in heck heard a lot tonight. So much so that I'm still going to pursue this. We are a small piece of the process. You're a part of this. The Clay County Commission's a part of this. But I'm going to say that I'm going to continue to look for other sites as well. I think there are other options. It's just, this is the one that we were looking at. It looked good. It, you know, when I went out there and I saw for myself, all I saw was wide open land. I didn't get to talk to any of these neighbors during that time. And I think if, if I had the chance, if we had this meeting early on, we probably would have abandoned this effort and looked for another site. I, I know some developers and I'm going to reach out to them and I'm going to ask them if there's a possibility that we can work together on finding a better location. But in the meantime, because I don't know what's going to happen, we, we still have to do something. But the, the, the arguments tonight that I've heard sounded pretty, pretty compelling to me. And that's what's, that's what's motivated me to go ahead and continue to look for another site. Because if there is a better option to select, I want it to be that option, not just the one that's before us today. And I know we have time. There's no emergency to build this, this location. We don't have a range right now, but you know what? As some of the residents said tonight, we'll continue to make it work. I mean, we have for, for over two decades at least and, and we're going to continue to do it regardless. But there, there were two things that were near and dear to my heart. And one was when Dr. Matt was up here talking about the ladies in, at the facility at 100th. I've gone out there. We've worked with them and I know what they have and I think that they're doing good work. Secondly, I'm also a veteran. I'm also service-connected. And if we have veterans going to this gentleman's house to unwind and get away from the stresses of life, so anything that we can do to reduce that 22 a day number, I don't want to interfere with that. Because I'm also the VFW Post Commander here in Liberty for VFW Post 4043 and an active member with the American Legion. I know what veterans go through. I go through it myself. Lastly, there is a lot of support for the sheriff's office here tonight despite what we're trying to push, what we're trying to achieve. And for that, I'm extremely grateful because there are parts of the country that don't get that kind of support. And even though they don't approve of what we're talking about tonight, they're still saying, "We support the sheriff's office. We just want a better place for them." And I agree with them. I want a better place. It's just we always run into challenges finding that better place. So I'm hoping now with all, with all of their support, that we can find a better place. And when I go before the, the Clay County Commission and I ask for a new location because for whatever reason we were able to find one, that I would have everyone behind me supporting that effort as opposed to just a few people from my agency or some other people in the audience who support the sheriff's office but are here for another reason. This is massive support right here. So I'm going to keep that in mind. Not that I'm going to change anyone's mind, but I did want to offer an opportunity for a personal tour of the site. This coming Thursday at 6:00 PM, I will be out there for any of the member, any of the neighbors or vested members of that area, of this, people with vested interest. And the reason why I say that is because when I was on the Pete Mondo radio show this morning, I said that that was my plan. That was my intent. Our phones blew up this morning from all over the place saying, "Hey, how can I get in on that tour?" But we're, we're not going to take 300 people and, you know, take them on a tour of that facility. That tour is specifically for the people who are sitting behind me and standing behind me. So I will be out there, but it will be Thursday evening at 6:00 PM and we can go walk the, the landscape. Now it has to be walked, okay? Because I know I've heard that this is on an elevated location, but in, when you, in order to access the location, you actually have to walk down into a bowl. There are natural berms that are 20 to 30 feet high on the west side and a north side. So if we try to take any vehicles back there, because I think it was mode, I hope it was mode, because if we're going to walk back there, I want to know where we're walking. But certainly we can't take vehicles because I don't want people dropping off at 20-foot ridges. Okay? So with that being said, I really appreciate your time. I certainly appreciate everyone's time behind me. It's 20 after 10. I'm tired. I really am. But I appreciate everyone's time now. Conclude with that. Thank you.
We've already closed public participation. I'm sorry, sir. No, he did not. No, he did not. Yes, sir. Think we've closed the public participation. I don't want the board members to have any discussion amongst themselves. I consulted with the staff earlier today and Kip and staff are recommending to continue this case based on the amount of information, the amount of public comment that we've experienced. this case based on the amount of information, the amount of public comment that we've experienced this evening. This will give the planning and zoning board adequate time to review the applicant's documentation. The August planning and zoning meeting will be board member discussion only, no applicant nor public comments will be heard. Regardless, the public is welcome to attend the meeting. And we would keep the record open until one week from today. Close of business, COB 5:00 PM on July 18th. If the applicant has any additional information, he wants to submit to support his app. If anyone that opposes or supports the application can submit to P&amp;Z by 5:00 PM on July 18th. So, after that being said, I would call for a motion to continue the CUP for the shooting range till our August meeting.
Yeah, Chairman, you just said July 18th, so I, I wanna just make sure we're clear, the record's gonna stay open till July 21st, and you're asking for a motion to continue the case to August 1st, correct?
I was instructed to keep the record open until next Tuesday, July 18th at 5:00 PM.
Are, are we not gonna match what we did?
Either one's fine.
So, my, my preference would be, since we did the 21st on the previous case, so we're not having different dates for my staff, for the public, that we do the 21st?
That would be my preference also.
Okay.
COB 5:00 PM, Friday, July 21st. The record for this case will close.
Yes, yes.
Then, still call for a motion to continue this case to the August meeting.
I'll make a motion to continue the case.
Very well, do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a roll call vote?
Mark Beggs.
Yes.
David Rotis.
Yes.
Terry Griffin.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
Brad Scarlett.
Yes.
Jerry Nolte.
Yes.
Randall Morris.
Yes.
Chairman Tom Decker.
Yes.
And can I just add real quick before we go to the next case? If anybody has questions about what occurred tonight, please reach out to my staff at the planning and zoning office, and then we're ready for the next case. And the motion carries.
We thank everyone for coming out tonight and showing the interest and support. We're still in session, so if you all could step on out, we'd appreciate it.
Because it could pull the application.
If y'all would take your conversation out to the hallway or down the stairs, we're
So, Chairman, I've got about three hours of land development code amendments, if you wanna have that discussion.
Yeah, continue.
So, I'm gonna make it really, really easy. My preference is that we continue this case to the next meeting, just get a motion and a second, and we'll adjourn the meeting after you make those motions.
If y'all would take your conversation to the hallway, we'd appreciate it.
This is as good as it's gonna get, probably.
Okay. The next case that we will hear this evening is case number June 23-136A, and could we have a staff's report, please?
Uh, we're gonna defer the staff report. Our request is that you continue this case till next month's meeting, we'll have a full discussion at that point, with it being 10:30 at night.
Very well. I would call for a motion to continue the land development code hearing to our August meeting.
Motion to continue.
Very well, do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a roll call vote?
Brad Scarlett.
Yes.
David Rotis.
Yes.
Terry Griffin.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
Jerry Nolte.
Yes.
Martin Beggs.
Yes.
Randall Morris.
Yes.
Chairman Tom Decker.
Yes.
Motion carries. No further comments from me.
Okay. Then, meeting adjourned.
If I didn't end up meeting that back. The keyboard was turned off on the backside.
Oh, we made, we made 22 50 minutes.
Itty-bitty, tiny right there, yeah. Probably, yeah. Okay, that's all.
See you later.
I have so much appreciation from what you're doing now. Thank you so much for the attention to this.
Thank you for saying, hey, simple, rethink this. You know, whether it can be, whether it can be or not, it's not the problem.